Attend the town meeting to vote your concerns. This is only a process that we're going through in order to express the opinion of the board based solely on what is presented to us as the town warrant is written. So does anyone have any questions but the procedures that we've provided you with this evening? We'd like you to adhere to those as best as possible. Jim, have I missed anything on the introduction?
I caught the second half, but it sounded amazing. So, great job.
The first article, this Article 17, Hartford Avenue zoning laws. Brian, do you want to read the amendment? Jim, I believe by law we have to read it.
Yes, please, if you could read. That would be good.
Pursuant to the Town of Bellingham zoning bylaws and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Bellingham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 28, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Arkton Meeting Room in the Municipal Center, 10 Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Massachusetts. The Zoom option is also available with the link noted below. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on a proposed petition article for an amendment to the Bellingham zoning bylaws and zoning map. The proposal recommends amending the zoning district at the following addresses from the residential district to the business two district. 182 Hartford Ave., Parcel 24 Lot 5, 186 Hartford Ave., Parcel 24 Lot 6, 190 Hartford Ave., Parcel 24 Lot 7, 194 Hartford Ave., Parcel 24 Lot 8, 198 Hartford Ave., Parcel 24 Lot 9. Draft of the proposed amendments to the bylaws may be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Office or the Town Clerk's Office in the Municipal Center located at 10 Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Mass. During regular municipal center business hours. Questions, please contact the Town Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Motion to open the hearing.
We'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye. The public meeting is now open. I'd like the applicant to introduce themselves to the board and to the audience.
Good evening. My name is Mark Kavalek. I'm an attorney. I am representing owners of the five parcels that are before you tonight as suspected Article 17. My offices are in Westboro, Massachusetts. With me tonight as a representative of the owner is Carrick Fialy, the Manhattan Group. Also, as part of the presentation tonight, is Sean Reardon from Tetra Tech. He'll run us through several slides of our presentation. As the public hearing notice was announced, this involves five parcels in a residential district. All five parcels have been in the past used as residences. Several of the parcels now are states of disrepair and some are unoccupied. The five parcels are at the intersection of Hartford Ave. and North Main Street.
I just interrupted for one moment, sir, just to be very transparent. I had an opportunity to speak to one of the people with you this evening to be transparent. And he asked if he could meet with me to go over this. I indicated him that this board is very transparent. We do things as a group. And I declined the opportunity to meet with him one-on-one. I also, he asked me what he thought the best approach would be. And I indicated to him that to look at your presentation from three years ago, update it, find out what you think you needed improvements and move forward. So I just thought to be very clear, I just wanted to put that out so everyone's aware. I apologize for interrupting.
This proposal will take those five residential parcels and rezone it for Business Two. Business Two is the district immediately across Hartford Avenue. And we believe this proposal is wise for the town for several reasons that Sean will run us through. And Sean, I can hand it over to you to run us through about 10 slides.
That's fine, Jim.
And this will kind of give everyone in the room a graphic presentation of where the properties are.
Okay.
And what our arguments for the proposal are based on.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Again, my name is Sean Reardon. I'm with Tetra Tech. We're an engineering firm based out of Marlboro, Mass. I actually just grew up down the street in Franklin and Hein Street, went to St. Brendan's. So, you know, grew up in this area and know that witnessed the evolution of this area from what it was in the 70s where I used to ride my bike in the sand pits to what it's become now, which is quite a bit different.
I think a lot of the people here tonight have been here since the 70s.
And I was frankly surprised. I was like, I never realized, growing up, 495 was always just an omnipresent thing, right? And I was like, wow, the houses that are out there were built before 495 was. So 495 was like built in the late 60s, early 70s. I still remember looking at USGS maps. It says, you know, 495 proposed. And I'm like, well, that wasn't that long ago. But it does speak to the evolution of this area. The only thing that was here in the 60s were these homes. There may be a few other buildings. But none of what you see out there that pretty much defines this area existed when these homes were originally constructed. And I think that's kind of what we're speaking to here, which is everything around these parcels has evolved and transformed. And I think more than any other parcels on this section of road, these parcels have sort of absorbed the brunt of that change. They're the closest to 126. They're at the intersection of North Main Street and Hartford Ave., probably the busiest intersection in this area. So really, what we're looking at is just sort of like a logical evolution of this area in response to what's happened across the street. And in just the interest of disclosure, I don't think Mark or I were part of the presentation that was done three years ago.
Okay.
So some of this might be a little bit different because it's sort of our suggested approach.
Okay.
And we're choosing to focus strictly on the zoning issue, which is the issue at hand and not what will become here. Because frankly, once the zoning changes, then that defines the lens through which the project could change. And the process is the same for everybody else.
That is much appreciated. Keep me on the narrow scope on tonight.
Good. So I think the big difference between what was previously proposed was that it was a much bigger area proposed for rezoning last time. The reason we're here just for these parcels is, number one, because it's parcels that our team controls. So we're really just sort of looking to change things that affect us. Literally, surely there's collateral issues for everybody else. But again, these are parcels that are really under our control. And in our opinion, like I said, they're the priority parcels. They're the ones that most logically deserve to be rezoned because of their adjacent uses, their positions on the intersection, and their sort of the inordinate burden that these parcels have absorbed by virtue of all the other developments come along. And also because one of the big things on the horizon is the potential widening of Hartford Avenue. And these parcels are really integral because the intersections at North Main Street and Hartford Ave. that need to happen to widen, the intersection needs to be widened to allow more capacity through it, requires land from these parcels in order to affect that widening. So without land from these parcels, that widening can't happen. And there's no way the residential uses could be maintained at the same time as granting that widening. Whereas with the rezoning, we can do new uses that can work in a narrower strip. So we can more accommodate the potential widening that happens there with a more open palette of uses available to us. This is an image of the proposed rezoning, just to help everybody orient themselves. Hartford Street here runs through the middle of the sheet. And 495 is this big swath of white here on the right side.
For the people in back, if you want, you can move your seats temporarily so you can see the presentation. Feel free to move so you get a better angle of it.
And the five parcels are the blocks of land that define the northern side of the North Main Street, Cedar Hill Road, Hartford Ave. intersection. So if you think about it, it's the corner. It's the corner lots, for lack of a better word. And exclusively those lots. Just to provide a little bit more context, this is an existing additions plan showing the locations of the current homes, the locations of the adjacent uses. And as anybody that's driven through that, they know it's, as you're heading west into Bellingham, it's a fundamental shift between what's on your left and what's on your right. And it's understandable when you look at the history. But when you're looking forward, there's got to be a sense that something needs to change. And our opinion is that in the future, we could envision that whole side of the road being more consistent with the uses on the other side of the road. I say more consistent, not that they should be like. We think there's a really good opportunity here to sort of create a transition zone between what I think can be perceived as a sort of a corporate, big box mentality and do something that's a little bit more appropriate to transition between that and the residential use on the opposite side. And part of our vision is that we envision a smaller density application that's more sort of a rural commercial use as opposed to, you know, like the traditional thought of like an Applebee's or something like that. But you know, something that allows a little bit less of a stark transition between the two uses. And just to help orient everybody, again, Hartford Ave. is in the center of the sheet. Here's North Main Street. The Dunkin' Donuts is here. Sunoco Station's here. And the properties are these five parcels here. And what I want to do is call to people's attention just how close these homes are to 126. And particularly the one furthest to the east, that's something literally eight or 10 feet from the edge of the road.
Okay.
So if there were to be a widening, in the widening area here, I don't know if you can make it out, but there's a red shaded sort of rectangle along the north side and a small section on the far side of North Main Street. That's the area of land needed to accommodate the widening of that intersection. So the widening of that intersection includes an additional lane, a left turn lane at North Main Street to make that, to allow more volume to pass through that intersection of the same green. Without that, you're left with the same delays. You're left with the same queues on Hartford Ave. So as you can see, that widening goes right through the front of the house furthest to the east. I forget which number it is. But you can see why there's no real logical scenario where you could maintain that use or frankly, any other residential use on that parcel and accommodate the widening as well. The fortunate thing is with the Business Two zoning, there's a whole bunch of uses that now can go in there that, from a geometry standpoint, can work with a narrower lot. So that's our main position there. So we're here because basically, the use of these parcels as a residential use is unsafe and frankly unsustainable. I'll tell you a story that Kevin was telling me, Kevin Neen was telling me when he bought one of these parcels is that the person he bought was overjoyed because they thought there was no way they would ever sell them. Because frankly, it's, and I think this is one of the better homes that were in that situation. There's, it's just not usable as a residential property. I don't know anybody that would feel safe living there. I certainly don't know anybody that would feel comfortable living there given the volume of traffic on 126, given how close those properties are to 126, given the sort of the density and the activity on the opposite side of the road. We see that there's an opportunity to take these parcels, create a buffering entity between the residential uses behind and the commercial uses on the opposite side of the road. That makes sense and is consistent with the zoning. The other thing, as I mentioned, the continued use of these as residential is inconsistent with the future vision for Hartford Ave. That there's no way you can continue the residential uses and still widen Hartford Ave. So that's the main focus why we're here. We think it makes perfect planning sense. So I think anybody that sort of drives down that road can sort of feel that it doesn't, it doesn't work. I mean, just something seems incongruous about all the big, heavy retail on one side and these small, you know, ranch homes that were built in the 60s on the opposite side. Clearly, when they were built in the 60s, totally different world, right? There was nothing across the street. There was nothing on the opposite side of 495. 495 wasn't even there. So at the time, made perfect sense. I mean, you had all these nice, great track of homes behind it, which I think still makes sense. But the ones that front on 126, because everything that's happened around them just no longer, like you said, no longer sustainable and frankly, no longer safe. It's a really appropriate location for some kind of transitional development because it's so close to 495 and it's so close to 126. So in terms of being zoned business, this is exactly the type of lot that you want to zone business because it's close to all that major infrastructure. And I think the fact is, it's better for the town from a fiscal standpoint, right? Right now, it's generating almost no revenue for the town. As a commercial use that fits within the Business Two zoning district, it's probably going to generate at least, what, four, five times as much? Just generate from revenue that doesn't reflect the fact that, well, if there are school-aged children in these homes, that's a draw on the cost of town that ends up sort of making it even more fiscally responsible. And then, you know, this is a bit sort of selfish, but from my standpoint, I travel this way a lot. I'd love to have an option on the other side of the road. So I don't have, if I need to get gas at Speedway, I don't have to take a left in and take a left out, right? If I had an option on the other side, and I gotta believe anybody coming back home to Bellingham after an evening commute, if they're heading west and they need to get gas, certainly if they need to get a coffee or need to get a soda or something on the way, or a thing of milk, it would be great to have an option on the north side so that I don't have to fight traffic crossing it to get in and getting out. So from our standpoint, it's just for a whole lot of reasons, it makes sense. And I know the perception might be that we're doing this because it's self-serving. Just to some extent, that's true certainly, but it also makes perfect sense. And I think it's part of the way that this area is just going to evolve naturally over time. Then, I spent a little bit of time in preparation, let me see if I can zoom in here a bit. You guys did a really, really nice job on your 2020 master plan. So I spent quite a bit of time looking through your 2020 master plan. Really well done.
Thank you for reading this.
And what I was struck by is it closed out with a series of implementation strategies. And I was scanning through all these implementation strategies. And there were a handful of them that were like literally demonstrative of the zoning change. And I just want to close by just sort of going through them, in part because I think people need to know the amount of work that has gone into thinking about what the town needs to do to make it a continued success, a continued place that people want to live. And there's literally, I think, like 20 pages of specific implementation strategies. And they focus around different categories. So the first is land use. This is the very first, very first item in the 2020 master plan implementation strategy. It says, "Continue to seek opportunities to align new growth with infrastructure so not to overburden our roads for drinking water." So in this case, it's like, okay, we have an opportunity to do something that generates revenue, that addresses existing problems, and is absolutely located in the perfect location to sort of insulate the rest of the town from any associated impacts. Now certainly, the people that are closest to it, there's going to be change. But as far as the balance of the community, I mean, literally, it's all located right next to the highway. It's leveraging all the existing infrastructure that serves a much larger development. So really, it makes perfect sense and it's perfectly on point with this. And then A3, it says, "Specific, revise the zoning map to align uses with the existing infrastructure." So in my mind, there's nothing more incongruous than seeing small, single-family homes adjacent to a four-lane state highway. It, just from a planning perspective, it just doesn't make sense. So to me, it's like this application speaks directly to that A3 comment. And just to continue down, this is several pages here. But we go into economic development and under A2, it says, "Examine the business and industrial allowed uses. Look for opportunities for mixed uses that can share resources such as parking or varied traffic patterns." So again, this is a perfect example. It's like, right now, 126 suffers from an overburdening of uses on one side of the road, forcing a bunch of left turns, right? And left turns for anybody that does traffic, they're just the bane of a traffic engineer's existence because it's everything else stops to allow a single turn to go. And what we've done is by putting all these uses on one side, we forced half of the volume on 126 to make two left turns in order to access those uses. So in my mind, it speaks perfectly to this A2, which is, okay, let's take the infrastructure that's out there. Not only how do we best use it, well, let's come up with a use that allows us to use it more effectively, can actually reduce traffic congestion, and also at the same time can accommodate a future vision for a widening that will impact the area even more. So again, another point where this particular zoning is perfectly in line with what the 2020 master plan suggests. And it continues on, and I'll be brief, but you know, even through the balance of the economic development sections, there's several different areas, circulation and infrastructure, where, you know, almost literally, this specific application translates directly to the implementation strategies that you have in the master plan. And that's really why we're here. I think, from what I understand about the proposal three years ago, I thought that was a great idea because it made perfect sense for everything along the whole corridor. But this is, I think, a little bit more digestible because it's sort of like, okay, I understand why there was so much anxiety about such a gross change before. This is a sort of a more narrowly focused change that can maybe prove to people that the change can be a good thing without sort of, you know, jumping, you sort of stick your toe in the water instead of jumping in full way. And I personally look forward to doing something as, I see the houses every day there. My parents remind me all the time when they drive by, say, "When are you going to do something about that?" It's like, yeah, well, we're working on it. So I think the motivation here is to do something there, but to do something that makes sense. And that we think that this change in zoning is a small part of the week.
Thank you.
Just want to close in our presentation to remind everyone in the room, I know it's obvious to the board members, but a zone change of this type and a use that the Manhattan Group might propose in the future will most likely require site plan review, could require a special permit before this board, may require a special permit before the board selects it. So this change is really only the beginning in line with what Sean just presented, in line with the master plan, but it's not the end. Just as the chairman said, that the town meeting is to approve this zoning proposal and tonight's hearing is just the beginning. After town meeting, any proposal for these properties would get further review by this board and potentially the board selecting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the intention.
Mr. Chairman, we have two documents also that we could enter into the record.
Yeah, and, yeah, and if you want, was a gentleman submitted this? Oh, to the applicants.
We have one email.
I have it. Thank you.
First, okay. So I know you're talking about transition between businesses across the street and then hoping that the rezoning of these parcels will be a nice transition to the residential directly abutting. That kind of, that was your standpoint. So you believe a gas station is an easy transition from business to residential or as this proposal, because I'm just looking at the proposed site rendering and I don't know if I see that being an easy transition from what's across the street to the residential.
For purpose of clarity, we've only had meetings discussing specific proposals.
Sure.
Those are all in the context of a special use permit, which is a totally different process. So under this new sort of action, everything we do would be in response to the zoning change.
Yep.
But I think it's fair to say, our goal would certainly be to see if something like that could work within this existing zoning. I do believe it can be done very nicely. And for people that know Kevin Neen, everything he does is really well-kept and really well-maintained. It's got a sort of a rural feel to it. So I think, yes, I think it can be a much better transition than something else that could be there. And certainly a more appropriate transition than a single zoning.
Okay. I just, with the zoning change, with the uses that are allowed, I mean essentially, we allow, not we, the town allows the zoning change. Those uses are allowed in that, on those parcels. That's the end of it. It's allowed by, right? And I feel hesitant based on the residential neighborhood located directly abutting these parcels to do something like that. That just concerns me. I do understand, you know, being on Hartford Ave. And especially with the roadway changes that are coming up in hopefully the very near future. I can understand your standpoint, but I also feel that we, you know, we need to protect the integrity of the residential neighborhood as well. And I feel like with these lots, you have limited space, a desirable buffer to protect the integrity of those lots is going to be kind of difficult. So those would just be concerns that I have with this proposal of the zoning change.
Completely understandable. So just for reference, and Mark mentioned this. In order to do any kind of restaurant with the car service, it would require a special permit from the planning board. Any kind of retail sale of gasoline would require a special permit from the select board. So those are high standards for approval and would come with a high standard of expectation for us to create a product that could address most, if not all, of those issues. So, you know, I think that becomes our burden going forward. But to your point, you know, the zoning is sort of an entry option for, that includes several different things. But all of which require some sort of approval by a board in town. And as those uses become sort of more and more, I won't say aggressive, but say maybe potentially not something people like, it requires a higher standard of approval. So, you know, obviously, drive-through is perfectly good for the planning board to judge that. But a gas station, the zoning clearly says that, okay, that gets elevated to the select board and that becomes, you know, another elevated standard for getting approved.
Yeah. You're not sure what's going in there. You could do multiple different ideas on this property, correct?
Correct.
And firstly, it's a nightmare now. Firstly, I would like to see the infrastructure be done before the buildings go in. I think that's where this project needs to go. These intersections be all done, DOT come in. That's all a long, long procedure. And if they just rezoned, if you guys built your building, it may be five, 10 years, whatever it gets done. They're going to live with this traffic nightmare for them 10 years?
That's a real good point. What I'd offer in response to that is, part of the reason Hartford Ave. doesn't work very well is because of the unbalanced development. That there are no options on the north side of the road. And a lot of the congestion, a lot of the problems come from people taking left turns, interrupting traffic, interrupting flow. We think in an almost sort of odd sort of way, doing something on the opposite side of the road, that's intended as a pass-through. So this is why we think like a convenience store and a gas station could be a good thing here because nobody sets out from their home to go to the gas station. They go to the gas station as they pass it up going somewhere else. So from our standpoint, that use generally is not expected to generate much new traffic at all. What it's intended to do is take traffic that's going by anyway and just make it convenient. And in this case, having a use like that on the north side that generates very little new traffic, but That generates very new little new traffic, but helps make the traffic that currently goes by work better. It is a win win. Um, so so from our standpoint, as far as the transportation infrastructure is concerned. What's out there is adequate to serve the project. Um, you know, there's a larger issue that clearly these five lots are not part of creating and clearly are not part of um, you the the final solution. I should say that they are part of the final solution, but not responsible for the final solution. Um, the elegance in this scenario is by rezoning, we create the pathway to free up the land that's needed for that widening. Without land from these parcels, those that widening cannot happen. There's no room on the opposite side. So again, by by virtue of of what's happened already on the opposite side of the road. There there's no longer an opportunity to widen that side of the road. The only opportunity is on the side with with what I would consider the marginalized residential properties that have bought one twenty six. So so inordinately, that taking now has to happen from these residential properties. In our mind, rezoning creates an opportunity. And we've looked into this, that we can, we can responsibly develop those lots and provide the ten or eleven feet that's needed for the widening. So, you know, again, there's a certain synergy there that we don't, we don't necessarily need the the improvements to to develop the projects because we think the projects, if they're done properly, can actually result in a net benefit to the traffic patterns. But also be in developing those properties, we can free up the space that's needed for the widening that that happens for those sort of more regional traffic needs.
The other thing that I would.
So can you repeat that again? You said you may free up the space?
Yeah, if we, if we, if we are successful in the zoning amendment process. We we believe we have proposals that will afford us the opportunity to give up the frontage space needed for the mass DOT widening.
Okay.
But the other thing I was going to mention i- in response to uh the comment about infrastructure is that there are small changes that can be made over current conditions. I mean, right now there are five presidential driveways and empty out to one twenty six. You know, any review that is made for a future development plan, whether it's site plan or special permit review, will most likely involve a traffic study. Uh, this board and board of selectmen's review of curb cuts, uh, traffic alignment. Uh, and and things of that nature. So there are small things that can be done, notwithstanding the pending nasty OT improvements at one twenty six that we think would be an improvement over what's here today.
At last time meeting, you only had the the one proposal, right? You've added this other one.
Uh, technically, I just ask a question. Jim. Are you there?
Yeah, ma'am.
I believe um, this was with was this withdrawn before the last town meeting, correct?
That is a good question. I believe it was withdrawn at town meeting.
So technically, this has not been in front of the town meeting. I believe after we looked at it in two thousand nineteen and feedback for the neighbors. I believe it was withdrew from the warrant article and did not appear at the town meeting. Just disappointing.
Do I think the property was passed over?
Okay, pass, okay. So technically, it's not been.
That's why I'm seeing I thought I'm seeing this the first time.
Okay.
This and then we had this other building here, with just the two in and out.
I'm sorry, I dropped it. Guys, wha- what are you looking at?
Uh, this is trouble in the butter.
Oh, okay. So but this was the, this was that parcel there though, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So you would, the one that's across the street to the left of that one way, that wasn't there before you would. Whatever that is, it was to the right of that street, correct?
A- again, w- we're not here to 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 talk about any specific proposal because we don't have any specific proposal under a rezoning change.
Okay, let let me ask a point of clarification. Can you tell the audience? When you were here last time, you made a proposal for specific plots of land. Have have you increased the amount of property you now own in the proposal you're presenting to us tonight?
Yes, I I think that's accurate. So again, forgive me. I wasn't part of that presentation, but I've heard enough history.
Yep.
And I know the sequence of events, yes. So if there was a specific proposal discussed at the time of that last meeting, it would have been only the three lots closest to four ninety five.
Correct.
Because the meeting group only took ownership of the other two lots within the last year or so.
Okay.
Yes, so so that's.
I think that's the point, that's what he was pointing.
And forgive us, you know, neither Mark nor I or Ty were involved in that three years ago, but but we do have enough information.
But everyone in this room, yeah, was involved with this going back.
Yeah, Judge, I'm just going to lead in what I led with. Personally, I think the infrastructure needs to be done before this type of proposal goes in that area.
So when looking at this property, you know, I see residential across that whole side of the street. One of the largest issues that we have in this town is our mixed usages with residential business, industrial, not jumbled up. So we have lots of proposals that come into town that say an industrial situation, an industrial, and there'll be a house in your life.
Yep.
That's been grandfathered in three years. And those residents come in and they're they're upset and, you know, we're putting in, I can think of several projects that residents have come in and said, hey, how can you put this business, industrial, whatever the project is next to my house? And my response usually is is that, well, hey, you know, i- it's zoned industrial, it's zoned business. By right, they have the right to do it. So here were the reverse situation. Reverse situation is that whole side of the street is residential right now. Okay, so it's all residential. I I certainly want to hear from the residents that has come out tonight. But my thoughts are that if if that whole side of the street is residential. Then I believe that that's a an area that should remain residential unless the town is overwhelmingly saying, hey, we should move to something else. So it's it's just the reverse of tip the typical situation we have is that you know, we've got residents that come in and say, hey, why are you letting them put? I don't want to use a business, but a business with a large imprint right next to my house. And this, this is the reverse of that. And quite frankly, I I see all the yellow on that map and that yellow on that map tells me it's all residential with the exception of the properties that you own right now.
Um, well, those are, yeah, those are, those are still zoned residential.
They are still zoned residential. Yeah, that's what you're looking to change.
What I what I would say is in response to that is it is, you know, again, that zoning was was from a different time.
Yep.
Um, and what has happened through the process that you just described above allowed zoning on the opposite side of the road, no, no. Nobody's fault, right? But but the the development of that side of the road has disproportionately impacted the properties that are on one twenty six. And to the point where they're frankly not safe or usable. At least these aren't. I mean, I'd argue that anybody behind these are in a fundamentally different position. Because living on one twenty six and having a driveway on one twenty six, as opposed to leaving even fifty feet off of it and having a driving off a different road. Fundamentally different application. So so my response to you would be, yeah, absolutely agree with you. But this is a case where exactly the issue that you described has disproportionately impacted these parcels and we're looking to remedy that and do it in a way that that makes sound planning sense. And and that's that's.
With multiple options of business to opportunities. So a- again, you know, when 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 a project comes in to the board, I believe that we need to take a look at, you know, where it's owned, what uses are and watch out for the neighbors, okay? But when it's zoned industrial and zoned business too. That gives the rights to the owner of the property. Different rights than trying what you're trying to do here. I see that that road is is a clear delineation of residential versus other things up there. Um, I guess to me, that's one point. The sec- the second point is you know, the the widening the road situation. I've seen very creative developers in here with engineers in here. So I'm sure that there there's going to be create some creative solutions to that when it comes. And I do believe that Hartford Ave does need a creative solution. Um. That's my second point. My third point, and I'm trying not to be too harsh right now, okay? I'm just going to say, I'm trying not to, okay? But I'm going to say it this way, your mother's right. Um, when you've got a properties that are boarded up, that are eyesores, that have been going on for years, your mother's right.
But but I'd ask, why do you think that is? Do you think it's my choice?
Why are they, why are they boarded up? What's the reason that they're all boarded up and not the property's not taken care of?
Because they're unusable as residential space.
Wait a minute, they they were residential space. I I'd rather not argue with you, but I disagree with you, sir. You've got an eyesore. And your mother's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just say it that way. And I would like to hear from the residents when we get down with this.
Well, for now.
For now.
No, uh, thank you. So so thank you for your your presentation and I think this conversation is is a conversation the town's been having for a while now about. You know, uh, what do we do? This is a high traffic, high volume area. And like you said, the the what's happened here is uh happens, it's has happened in many parts of our town in that zoning and and the development has hasn't kept up with our infrastructure and our needs and traffic banning. So I think that you know, this is an important conversation. So I appreciate that you're coming here to to help us understand that. Um, and I'm also sensitive to the people that still remain in that stretch. Where they have, you know, I I recall from the last presentation, I believe, uh, there were individuals that stood up and sort of described the horror of living on that on one twenty six and they have to hurry up and pull in uh, because they can't slow down. And then because they pull in and they don't have a place to turn around, then they get to back up onto one twenty six the next day. And it's it's something that uh that the town does need to look at and help out those people. And so I agree to that point. I want to pick up uh, point made by uh Phil about the conditions of the property. And I I recall when the applicant purchased the property. And either right before or right after, and there were um preliminary discussions about what what can we do with these parcels of land since that time. I think it's it's fair to say that parcels of land in the in the buildings on them have demonstratively and objectively and significantly declined in in the state of uh the condition that they're in. And if I had to, if you said, Brian, I'll give you five bucks, if you can pick pick up another area in town where property is more lighted than what it is there, I would be hard pressed to think of something that is in worse condition, I think, particularly not a high traffic, high volume, high visibility area. So it in so with that in mind. In conversations with people over time, I think, I think the applicant purchased the property two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. I don't know exactly when. But in in many conversations with people to sort of informally, two kind of schools of thoughts have bubbled to the surface of why it is these properties are in the conditions that they're in. And I think that they really do are thorn thorn in the side of a lot of people that drive by it every day. And one school of thought is is that these properties were purchased when when the purchase was made. Town officials and other people informed the applicant that, look, you're gonna, if you want to do anything other than build houses here, which you can do by right. And I literally, that's not the intention. If you want to do anything in these particular parcels, you're either going to have to get some sort of zoning relief, either through the zoning board, through a use variance, or you're going to have to petition town, the town to to vary the zoning. And I think it was convened at that time that that's a tall act. Um, so there's a school of thought, um, particularly after the last time that this was before us, is that those properties were intentionally blighted to um be a thorn in the side of the town so that when the app, when the, when the proposal does come back. That the town would be so desperate to take care of those properties and get it done, that it would help the process that way. And I'm also mindful and I know that um, since the time the applicant has purchased the properties until today, over those number of years, there's been what I would say either informal or formal uh contact with the applicant to say, you gotta, you gotta take care of these properties. You gotta do something. Please do something. And I think there was selection meetings where those those issues were raised. So that lends itself, I think, to that school of thought. The other school of thought was less intentional, but also equally not comforting, I think, to the town. And then it was negligently blighted. It wasn't intentional, but they were just let to rot. And I would suggest to you that the properties, when they were purchased, looked nothing at all like they do now at all objectively. And I I think that's a factual statement, not disparaging. But it's either intentionally blighted or negligently managed and maintained. And either one is not comforting to the town, not comforting to the people that live near the properties. And and you said earlier, and I and I've been by Mr. Mean Properties in in the other town where they are well making, but these particular properties are not are not at all. And town resources have gone to make him or make the applicant some corrective actions to make it look as bad as it does now. So to the extent that these properties are now in such a horrible condition. It's not that the applicant is completely helpless in resolving that problem on his own. It's in in, I understand that the the zoning relief would help him develop the property in a different way. But it doesn't give anyone warm and fuzzy feelings when 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 the applicant now comes to forest and says, hey, gang, I want to be treated a little bit special than everyone else. I want unique, a unique remedy for my parcels and just my parcels only. And uh, I hope that's okay. And sorry about the last four years. So how would you respond to those observations that people have made over the term?
Well, okay, so let me start then.
Can I, can I just say, I uh apologize. I think you're going to hear this um more than once. I'm gonna say it in a different manner. I think the public is going to say it in a different manner. But I suspect what Brian is articulating will be the not the last time you hear this this evening.
And it's not the first.
I understand. I will bring it up in different perspectives. So if you could just respond.
Yeah, thank you. And and actually, we've heard it now twice because Mr. Divine raised it, Mr. Saddle's very raised it. So, you know, we hear you. And I can't speak specifically to motives of your two choices, which was intentional degradation or negligent degradation. But what I can say is, having worked with my client now on this particular proposal, is that we definitely, the client definitely sees this as a property in transition. We believe it needs transition for all the reasons that we presented to you tonight. Um, that might change as a result of this effort. Whether it's by this board in this hearing or whether it was by a board at town meeting. Um, but I think that is the main reason why the 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 property has laid fallow for the time that it has. Um, what what I what I will say also, you ended your present, your your questioning or your comments by saying that we are, we're asking for a unique solution to a problem. by saying that we are asking for a unique solution to a problem. I really want to portray that differently. I think any applicant coming in for a property in this location, for the reasons that we've stated, makes a pitch for the public good here. Now, I understand there are, there are difficulties when anything changes. And sometimes you can change things affirmatively, and sometimes things change because they change and you have no affirmative role in it, it's a de facto change. In this particular case, with respect to the properties that are zoned residential, change has happened all around them. Change has happened as a result of 495. Change has happened as a result of development along Hartford Avenue. Change has happened as a result of development across the street. We believe we're reacting to that change. We haven't caused that change. That change may be difficult for people to get their arms around. But the reality is, that section of town has changed. It continues to change. And we believe this proposal fits neatly within that change. We believe that it will offer a better use of that property and allow for transition. And to the extent that you're concerned about, you know, lighting and noise and hours of operation and proper screening to the homes that will remain behind it and around it, that's the process that can happen when you have a particular proposal in front of you, whether it again is site plan or special permit, whether it's this board or the board of select. So I really don't see it as a request, a unique request for this owner for a lifeline. I do see a lot of public good here. And you might not see it the same way, but I think that's our pitch. And we will certainly take your criticism about the state of the properties, you know, back to the principles.
And I just wanted to just add that, you know, I can speak to my personal experience. Never has Kevin or any of his team come to me and said, we want to make this hurt for the town as a leverage tool. It's not been a motivation, it's never been expressed to me. Kevin's come to me, and his team's come to me with one constant request. Come up with something that works for the application and makes sense and meets, you know, the needs of the community and the space around it. So we've tried to come up with those things that are sensitive to all the things that we've heard. The perception may be otherwise, but I can tell you, my experience has been nothing but try to come up with good solutions for this problem. And I think what you allude to is also reinforces that we couldn't, and part of the reason the homes are still there is we can't rebuild those homes in those locations the way where they currently are. So we would need relief, or we would need something else, some sort of, so we have to maintain the homes that are there in order to protect the footprints of those homes and the ability to rebuild them. So in part, they're staying there, that if in the event that nothing can happen here, then we need to do something with the homes to protect the interests of those people. So that's why they exist currently.
And I understand that, I mean, if you knock those buildings down, you lose the, you lose the ability to put residential homes there.
Well, I mean, it becomes a lot more difficult. But it's a much simpler process if we're refurbishing homes or redoing homes. So, you know, but again, our position is that, and I think partly I'm speaking for the main group here is, you know, to rent those homes to somebody, in my opinion, is a risk. You, as a landlord, assume a risk renting that property to somebody. Selling those properties to somebody, not really an option. Maybe to someone else that's gonna have the same hope that we do, which that they can convince the town that there are better solutions. But we're left in the same place. So I'd put it back to you, is that, I get why you feel that way, but I can tell you my experience, that's never been a motivation or never been a discussion.
So, and I'll give everyone the benefit of the doubt. And I don't believe that it might be, but I would suggest that people look to actions rather than words. And I would suggest that if you're going to come to the town and ask for favorable treatment in regard to your zoning or your, whatever request it may be, that it would just be common sense, good business practice, good neighborly relationships to have your site under control and not be the subject of public hearings and other meetings. And before you come to the town and say, here, town, this is what I did. I put up a fence, I planted some trees, I did something. I tried to make it look nice. I know that this is a problem, and I'm trying, and I'm looking to meet you halfway. To me, that is just common sense. And the fact that that didn't happen would, like I said, sometimes people judge things by actions and not words.
Yeah, I wanted to articulate a few things, then turn it over to the public. I have several comments I want to make. I'm not gonna make them all now. I think it's important that we hear from the public, okay? I just want to put things in perspective from what both Phil and Brian said and what you articulated. I was at the fortunate pleasure of going to a four-year distance school. I thought we were taught pretty well. Let me tell you what I think you've done. You've reduced the value of your assets on Hartford Avenue over the past four years for a long gain to increase the asset of that land long-term. You've let those deteriorate. You haven't cleaned them up, hoping that this town will get tired of it and vote to make a change. You have one asset, again, that you diminished with the hopes of, if I make this look real bad, will change their mind and come on board and see my side of the story. Your comment about traffic, I think it's very genuine. But we also have to consider, when you say people didn't go out and make a stop for gas anymore. Times change because of COVID. People aren't traveling as much. As a rule, I go to local gas stations, go on across the street from where you want to put it, the corner of North Main Street. I don't just drive by. I try to, you know, know where I'm gonna buy my gas and try to keep it in the town of Kelly. You've used the word transition zone a lot. Well, you've created the transition zone by putting an eyesore on Hartford Avenue. And that really bothers me. Also, you've now enlarged the scope of your plan from two years ago. I know you weren't on board back then, but you have. And I assume that some people in this room were a little bit upset when you used the word "modulized neighborhood." This is where they live. This is where you gathered as a youngster, when you're going through the sand. If I had my brothers three or four years ago, and I was told it couldn't be done, I would have taken by eminent domain part of that roadway and part of the land and put a 10-foot fence up until you decided on what you wanted to do to diminish the impact on the town. That easily could have been done. It would have gotten you a lot of gravitas in town. But you chose the opposite path to let your asset deteriorate with the hope of creating a larger asset down the road. So I want to reserve some of my other comments until we can open it up to the public. What I like to do, do we have a Mr. DeLuca here this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I just responded one real question, if it might help. So in response to the additional parcels, I can speak to why those parcels were required.
Okay.
They were required exclusively because they provided the last piece of the real estate needed to do the widening of Hartford Avenue.
Okay.
So if it weren't for the control of those parcels, we wouldn't be able to say we can affect the final piece of that widening.
Okay.
So I can say, well, at least, that's what was shared with me.
Okay.
Again, I agree with everything you're saying, I understand the emotion. But there is, our motivation is, well, at least I can speak to my motivation, is quite a bit different than I think you're characterizing it. So all I just ask is to...
To characterize my report.
I get it.
About the people you're speaking to in front of.
I'm speaking to my experience, and I've been working on this project for a year and a half now. And our interests are genuine, and those are unfortunate. And I just wanted to be sure, that's good.
Okay. We have a long letter from a Mr. DeLuca. We would like to be put into the record. So that will be done. Can you make sure the, it's public information? Can you make sure the applicant gets a copy of that? And it will be available to the public. And at the end of the evening, we're doing a public discussion. You can probably pass the copy around because it's public and that neighbors can look at it. So now I would like to turn it over to the public.
There's one more. I didn't know if you wanted, there was one other piece that was to be entered into the record. This was a different...
Yes, who was the gentleman that submitted that?
Mr. Vicario.
Mr. Vicario. I'd like to call on you first, since you submitted, would you like to speak to what you submitted, sir?
Yeah, my name is Paul Vicario. I live on 8 Sagamore Road. Prior to that, I lived on, I think it was 43 Farm Street. I bought that home in 1994. So I've watched the evolution in the traffic increase. And I can just honestly say, it increases every single year. And there's just no signs of stopping. I followed an Amazon tractor-trailer truck. Apparently, they load and unload down by the pines. Now, this warehouse is going in on Tepo Street. There's the small Amazon vans that drive them through. This condo is going in down the street, that's gonna add hundreds of cars to the roadway. So long story short, the traffic just keeps increasing and increasing. When people approach that intersection now, they have to make a choice. Either go straight across, or they turn left or right to go to the center of town. Those are basic choices, or maybe get gas. I spoke with this gentleman here, owns the mobile station. He says he does up to about 700 sales on the gas pumps a day. So that means about 1,400 people turning in and out of the intersection. And so it's a route to the hospitals, it's a route to Mendon and Wilford. If you're adding that much more traffic into that intersection, it's just gonna slow the flow down, despite of whether the new construction will make it better or worse. And when the traffic backs up at that intersection, at that light, it's inevitable, they're gonna circumvent it by going down Farm Street or Arrowhead to, and those are all thickly settled streets. So that's how I kind of see it. But also, I meant to just put it right, because there's a lot to say.
I understand, sir.
And I don't mean to drag it all out or use up everybody's time. There's the traffic concerns I had, it was the health concerns I had for putting in the gas station so close. I had concerns about, you know, as mentioned, the deterioration and the motivation behind it. And, yeah, long story short, that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
I mean, I could go on.
I understand. In order to, I guess, facilitate or speed up this process, so we don't have every question repeated, how many people agree with his comment so far this evening? So, a majority of the people here?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, one individual said they agree online, or two agreed online as well.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Two agreed online.
Again, try to keep your comments as brief as possible. And please rotate the questions. I don't want to avoid repeating the same question.
Joe Madry, 36th and Arrow Road. So I just want to start off by saying, this project is not gonna make traffic better. Number one, the town can take that land by eminent domain. They don't need their permission, they don't need anybody's permission. If it's in the betterment of the town, the town can take it legally, okay? Second thing is, you're gonna have traffic coming in and out of that gas station and everything else that they want. It's gonna slow traffic down even more. Even if it doesn't bring new traffic, like you said, it's still gonna slow it down because people are gonna be coming in and out. We've already got a mobile station, the snow dome. We don't need another gas station. We've got the Speedway. I mean, a fourth gas station, for real? That's ridiculous. And the other thing is, those houses, the way they are, are unforgivable, okay? Kevin Mian is a multimillionaire many times over. There's no excuse to leave those houses like they were. This is modern-day blackmail, the way he left those houses, but forced the town to make this deal happen, okay? That's what he's done. It's modern-day blackmail, it's unforgivable.
Thank you, sir. Woman in the back.
Lesley Lynch, 11 Sagamore Road. My question is to...
You have to direct the questions to the board.
Oh, sorry.
I know where you're going, but properly, we have to do it.
If Mr. Mian does not get his way with this, what is he going to do with that land? And what is he going to do with those houses? Is he gonna just let them continue to rot?
That was one of the questions I was holding up on, because I thought someone would ask.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, our position, as I said, is that we believe this property is in transition.
Okay.
That may change as a result of this effort, one way or the other.
Okay. Woman in the back.
Hi, Kim Leuser on 4 Sagamore Road. So I wanted to first start by saying, I thought your presentation was very eloquent, and I definitely see all your points. However, I also feel that every one of your points has in a bottle. So there, every one of your points that you said for all the things that you think benefit are also all the reasons that it doesn't benefit our town. So I think there's pretty much in a bottle for almost every point you tried to make on what you thought the benefit was. I will say, you mentioned left turns and how people are taking left turns to get to gas. So I want to know how you stop people from taking left turns that are coming out of the Mendon, Oakdale area and want to get gas at this gas station now that's on this side of the road? How do you stop a left turn? So I think there's one point there that's got a rebuttal for it. The other thing I would question for the board is, you can't tell all of the townspeople that there isn't another solution or another use for those properties. I lived there when they, properties were purchased by the current owner. I watched him strip the trees, I watched them take out all the vegetation, I watched them strip the land, I watched them put them to where they are today. So they, if they did that before they addressed the town to see what they could do with it, then that's shame on them, I'm sorry to say, shame on them. You know, they bought them, they knew they were residential when they bought them. If they took those steps before they should have, then we're all paying the price, having a look at them every day. And I don't understand that at all. I feel like there are other use cases. I think that, you know, if you go down the street, there was a section in Medway, they had, somebody bought the property and put up all these, like, six or eight or 10 condos on this very small space. They are pretty much sitting on the street, and those people, they were sold in no time at all. And I feel like if you really look at demographics today, I feel like there are plenty of people looking to get out of cities after COVID who are looking for places to buy. The back streets are not gonna bother them one bit. You know, they're used to traffic. And I think that that isn't gonna bother them at all. So I do think that there are other use cases, and I really would just question, you know, the board. I think there are other use cases for the properties. So I do feel like, I hope there's some consideration given.
I'd like to address the usage issue. Right now, they're trying to rezone this. As a board, we do not go out and look at pieces of property and say, this would be nice here, this would be nice there. We have the deal that comes in front of us. However, I do agree with the approach that you're taking, that there are other options on this land. I believe at some point, some of those may have been articulated to the applicant, but I'm not sure. But we have heard what you're saying. I think there's a gentleman in the front row. Okay, anyone else?
There is a hand up online, sorry.
Okay.
Pauline Hamway, 39, Weatherfield Road. I thought this presentation was great tonight. I've lived in Ballingham most of my life, and I've seen a change considerably. And I know when 495 was put in there, I know what it looked like. And I know when four ninety-five was put in there, I know what it looked like before and shortly afterwards put in. Those homes right now are not livable in. I don't know if anyone that wanted to purchase them and to flip them for resale. You just can't live in those homes. They're horrendous. They don't belong there. It would be wonderful for the other people, I feel, of people that live behind them, a little further down, if those homes were removed. To see a country store, country stores, as you come off of four ninety-five and see how pretty it's going to be. That's something that this town can use. It's something that the people that lived here some time ago would like to see. The other side of that road is built up. And that's fine. We can live with that. There's a lot of traffic that's going through, and you have to be very careful about, you know, making turns. To have the country stores in, that would be something you could actually use and enjoy. Remind us that this was a little community with history, and people loved it that way. It's very different now. To address the traffic, you don't have to put in a gas station there. It could be more country stores or something else. There are gas stations on the other side, but it's true, when you are going past there, you need gas. It's easier if there would be someplace on the right to get your gas. Otherwise, no, just pass through. Take a little turn and go around. But I think it'd be great if you could do it when you do your errands on the lane that you're in. To see those, the project for those country stores, to me, that would be something very positive and plus, a big plus. To have a concern about rezoning that area, to me, that should not be a concern. It makes sense to have it rezoned. That little area would help the town. You could enlarge that road. I know that you're always in favor of enlarging the roads, taking people's frontage, just enlarging the roads to address the more traffic. You can have that option, you know, with this project that is proposed today. I find it strange that the rezoning and having residences next to businesses, next to commercial industrial is a concern there, but it's not a concern on Depot Street. To have the residences, the impact that they have, to see what they're going through. But that's okay. That's all right. There it's fine. Is it going to make a difference on a different street where marijuana is going to be proposed? You have residences on the other side of that, but apparently that doesn't matter. I find that very strange. And I don't really think that Mr. Mean had any intention of making that property look horrible. The thing is, is that, well, you have the houses boarded up. They have to be boarded up. People vandalize them. Windows are being broken. The property was being vandalized. You had to protect that property. And maybe if decisions could be made sooner rather than waiting for years, maybe these changes could be made more quickly. To have them wait for the roads to be changed first before any decisions on that property. What's to be done, what's to put there, to me, doesn't make sense. If you don't like the way those houses look now, they're not going to look any better. Two, three, four years from now, after the roads are widened and after the other projects are put in. Why not put in some really pretty places right now? That would be a help. It'd be very uplifting. I know this town was like before, and I loved it as a small town. It's not pretty anymore. I'm sorry, but it's not. It's changing. It's grown too fast. And that's not what this little town is all about. Other people that want larger towns, fine, but Little Bellingham has history, and that doesn't seem to be important. Not to, I'm sorry if people aren't impacted by the traffic. I am too. But I think that this is a good solution. It's something actually pretty. It's something that I can agree with and actually support. And very few projects in the past, you know, five, ten years, I've really, you know, kind of improved or really enjoyed seeing. But this, I think, is something that's very good. The town, Mr. Mean, would do a fabulous job. Everything is so pretty and just well thought out. So that's what I have to say.
We're not here to debate. Let her finish.
No, I'm finished.
I asked a question earlier. How many people, the comment was made, how many people share this concern? And it would be a benefit for the town? Okay.
It'd be benefit for the town?
Okay. Someone, we have some people on Zoom. Would they like to ask a question?
We can give it just one second if you don't mind, Chairman.
While we're doing that, I'd like to ask someone else in the audience. A gentleman in the back, nine o'clock.
Bob, I think, Rock Road. Can we, for special dispensation to Mr. Mean, can put houses back up in there? Maybe not be able to put three, maybe two. I understand the rebuild houses on the existing.
Correct.
If you could change that just for that area, let him get some of his money back. Maybe have a sort of a driveway that came up the side street. So he wouldn't have to exit onto Arthur. And that's already there.
Okay, I think, Jim, what options does Mr. Mean currently have to rebuild on that and as he pursued that?
It's currently zoned residential. He has an opportunity to essentially what is there, single family houses. They are pre-existing non-conforming lots, so that essentially what is there within the setbacks?
Would he be able to rezone that residential property for different purposes within the residential realm?
He has residential abilities now. Any sort of rezoning would have to go through the same manner as they are today.
Okay. The person who's zooming, have you been able to coordinate that?
It looks like they may have put their hand down. Maybe it was for something else. I don't see any other hands up at this time.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. I followed on you earlier. Yes.
My name's Fred Mill Graham. It's seven oh three, Village Chine. And concerns about the traffic. Traffic lights all the way from Maple Street through the intersection that we're talking about. With time, so that you can get cars through without backing them up would be a big help.
Okay.
There is a proposal to come before your board with reducing the the speed limit on Hartford Ave going the intersection going west.
Yeah.
If you slow that traffic down with twenty-five to thirty cars that are released from that light, nobody on Hartford Ave could get out of their driveways for a minute or two.
Okay, there has been.
That's a long time to sit there. That's longer than the light.
Okay.
With this proposal and widening the road a little bit, trucks would be able to move in and out of their property easier. Nobody's that I know would buy a single family house with children in that area. There's no place for kids to play.
Okay.
The residential value would be very low. Therefore, the tax income would be very low. Tax income from a business is reasonable. We're told this every time somebody wants to put in a warehouse.
Okay, I understand.
As far as the convenience goes for people west and up into, what do you call it, Weathersfield and Nathan Street, they'd have a country store and they'd have a coffee shop close by without going through the traffic in the center of town. So I see some benefit to this. I'm not saying it's a perfect solution.
Okay.
But I think it would dress up the farm. It would be more user-friendly. The left turn thing coming out of the gas stations, you have to turn right. If even, okay, I live in Hartford Village. I go down to the Speedway. I have to go into a phone depot to turn around and come back. So that means sitting through two lights to get gas. When I come home from Medway or that way, I could stop on my side of the road and go home. I mean, there are some logistical advantages to having that business there. However, the town feels about it is, you know, what we're going to settle with, but.
Thank you. And people agreeing with that time? Yes. Yes, sir.
I'm on Valley Road. In my right, when I walk down, see the hill all the time when I walk. We've been going by those houses for years, over thirty-five years. And prior to Kevin Mean buying those properties, the corner house down there was a drug house. It had broken windows. The cellar was broken for years. Kids smoking pot out back. The house next to it was basically almost the same thing, okay? Now, they all moved out. Kevin bought the property. Okay, now, when you come and take a left turn onto North Main Street, morning, afternoon, traffic is getting back up right there because they're trying to get into Dunkin' Donuts. Okay, with all traffic in this way, they back up right to the intersection. There's blocks traffic coming this way. Now, if you had a coffee shop on the other side of the road or a gas station or a convenience store, it's going to let that traffic go because maybe a lot of them are going to have to take that left turn and go to Dunkin' Donuts. The only gas station that is easy convenience and is doing a great job is the mobile station on the corner. Okay, and the people that run that and own it are doing a fantastic job. But they also have entrance and exits on Hartford Ave as well as on North Main Street. The other two gas stations, everything's on one side of the street. A gas station, a convenience store, or a coffee shop on the other side is going to make things flow a little better. It's not going to cause more traffic.
Okay.
It's not going to cause more delays.
Okay.
And as far as the houses behind with this proposal is, if a buffer is put up there with the trees, walls, whatever, whatever would help that, you know, the homeowner is there, it's going to be a big plus.
Okay. How many people share the opinion of the previous two residents? I think I believe, I think two more people. You have a gentleman in the back in the black, I believe?
Yep.
Thank you.
So I live on Rossin Road. I've been there for about six years. I have two little girls. And so far in this whole meeting, all I've heard about is taxes and traffic. No one's talked about how this is going to benefit the residents of the town besides revenue, tax revenue and traffic. The town shouldn't just be about taxes and traffic. It should be about a good place for your families to live. Young kids shouldn't be seen as a draw on the revenue of the town. They should be seen as a plus for the town. You have kids that go to school. You have kids that play sports. You have kids. My little girls are running around the neighborhood all the time, riding their bikes. We don't need another gas station where they can see it from their front yard. So I just, I understand the traffic and the taxes. Now, those houses are not bringing revenue to the town. Who cares? The town is enough to bring revenue to the town. To bring tax revenue to the town, we should think more about the families, the younger families. I'm looking around this room. I'm probably one of the newer residents. I'm probably one of the younger residents. This town is not attracting young residents. A gas station is certainly not going to attract young residents to the town. If you want to compete with towns like Franklin and Medway and Willis, a gas station is not going to help. And no one cares about tax revenue. When you have little kids and you're trying to grow up in the next town. The last thing I want to say, it'd be shameful that Mr. Mean is not here to represent himself with such a decision that's going to affect people in such a big way. We're not just adding a gas station around the corner from here, we're adding a gas station directly next to houses. The same neighborhood as a lot of these people. I mean, I don't know how many kids are in there, but thirty kids, twenty-five kids riding their bikes, running around from newborn to eighteen. My kids are eighty-four, so just what I want to say, I think the focus of this shouldn't just be taxes and traffic. We need to think more of the town more, sort of.
Thank you. How many people share that opinion? Okay, appears to be a majority here. One last question, a gentleman in the front row.
I'm Jim Fitzpatrick. I live near the other end of town, sixty-three Rentham Manor. I came here tonight with mixed feelings, whether I liked this or didn't like it. When I leave here, I'm going to leave with mixed feelings with I like it or don't like it. Because I've heard nothing that really sways me one way or the other. What concerns me, I agree with the gentleman back there, this probably was some form of blackmail, however you want to call it. But yesterday's over. Whether Mr. Mean is the nicest guy on the face of the earth or the biggest crook on the face of the earth, has no bearing on this at this stage. The problem is, we have a mess. We have a problem. We have a traffic situation. And we should deal with that. And who cares at this stage what could have, would have, should have? This is what we have to deal with today. Not whether Mr. Mean could have put up a fence or could have put up a house or built an airport for all we care. It doesn't matter. Yesterday's over. Let's deal with today, tomorrow, and the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. At that point, I think.
I know you're trying to wrap it up, but there is one hand up online. I apologize. MJ, if you have an opportunity?
Hi, I prefer not to say my name, but I do live on Cedar Hill. I'm not going to waste everyone's time and reiterate all the concerns about traffic. But I do agree with the gentleman. It is about the community. There's no one representing the community, the neighbors. This area is loaded with families. People walk in this area. And there's no regard for, Mr. Mean has no regard for the neighborhood or the community. It's all about his agenda. And I'm going to correct the lady that said that the houses were vandalized. I was home and they were not vandalized. They might have been vandalized before. But he had police training going on during the day when people were out walking. And that's why the homes are boarded up. He illegally allowed them to use those homes to do practice shooting during the day. And it's not considered, it's a residential property still. So all I'm saying is, there's a lot of concerns, and I don't agree with anything that's he wants to do. There's no need for gas stations. We have gas stations galore on this road. We're not Vermont. We don't need a country store. We can block Walmart. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I assume, I mean, may I?
For the, Mr. Chairman, for the record, should that person have given her name connected with the young person?
Yes.
So I would ask that her comments be stripped.
That's fine.
That's fine. Okay. Final, I've tried, we have a long night tonight.
I just want to clarify. My name's Eda Madry. I live on Cedar Hill Road. And I was told that day that Kevin Mean allowed the police department to use those homes as police training. I came down to the town hall and I said, you can't do that. That's residential. It's Kevin Mean's property. He can do what he wants. I said, oh, I can get on the phone with my relatives on the Worcester Police Department and have them use my home as a trading ferret? I said, that's residential too. So I just want to clarify, that is true. I came down here, I complained. And common sense prevailed because someone sent the police to those homes and wrapped it up nicely. So thank you to the police department.
Thank you. I've asked how many people would share your concerns. I don't know how many people were there that day. Last question, the woman in the, gentleman in the back, I believe?
Yes, Peter, last one, twenty-seventh, Yellow Road. I just want to back up, but this is mine. We just wanted to say, that's what I was about to say. I did witness this training session, battery rams, whatever, breaking doors down, breaking windows. That's what I saw. I will testify to that.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to make a decision. I'd like to close the public hearing. Private second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please, thank God by saying aye. Now we need to, this board needs to make a decision.
So generically, I, you know, I agree, something has to be done in this particular area that, you know, the the times have gone by and the residential. the times have gone by and the residential zoning here, you know, some sort of careful planning probably won't work very much longer in the future. Is this particular area is a, is a, with this proximity and four and five, it's congested, high traffic, high volume, particularly at the approach of that intersection there. That I don't think a piecemeal solution in zoning portions of this, this corridor is the right, is a solution, but it's not the final solution. I think that whatever is done to this particular strip of, of, of the, this roadway has to be holistic. In that, um, and I, I would respectfully disagree with the applicant's assertion that this would be a better alignment of existing infrastructures with our zoning. I would think it's actually the opposite. In that the, the existing infrastructure there is not keeping pace with what the zoning is. And to add a commercial element on the other side of the road certainly wouldn't help. And I think that would, to Dennis's point earlier, is that, that, you know, someday the state's going to give us money to fix this hopefully. And, and there's many easements given on these properties to, and, and work can be done to widen, correct some of the problems that the, that the town faces. So, yeah, at that time, I think that's when we should look holistically at this corridor and make change.
Are you, I appreciate all that, but I'm trying to say that we, I'm not going to say that. Um, we need to move forward. We need to.
I thought we had a discussion.
Well, discussion, motion, but you know what, I think properly, technically, most has been on the floor then has to be.
Okay. So I would move not to recommend this article to the town.
Second.
Second.
Okay, now we have discussion. I think, um, a part of the, um, people here are not in favor of this, as we've seen tonight. I think, uh, the public and the board have addressed their concerns. And, um, I agree that this is, at this point in time, not the best use. So, I think we can, unless anyone else has anything to say, this is called for the vote.
It's going to take two-thirds of the town, correct?
Um, yes, again, all we're doing tonight is moving it forward, our recommendation to the town meeting. At that point, you still have to go to the town meeting and let your votes vote the other way. That is the great factor about town meetings. The public decides. It's not this court. If I had my brothers, we wouldn't have to do this, but it's a statute in Massachusetts law. I've told Jim, I don't think it's appropriate, but we have to do it. So right now, we have a motion on the floor not to approve this. I'd like to call for the vote.
And just before we do that, some quick comment, just for the record, is the current conditions of the property notwithstanding, this is, I think for me, and probably for many of you, is more about the infrastructure and the changing of the zoning uh, and, and aligning and looking at this holistically.
All in favor of the motion not to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We'll take it. And gentlemen, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, the public. We have another two other items this evening to discuss. I would ask, when you leave, please close the doors.
Two minutes.
And we'll have like a two-minute break. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Full of a carryover, guys. A report guy.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate your effort.
We're still being reported, but.
Oh, I just want to say, I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, sir. Thanks much.
And, uh, I mean, thank this job. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Please, come back to your meetings. Don't be a stranger. Okay.
What's your, what's your forum at the town meeting?
The lowest, the lowest we got, well, I don't know about the forum, but the lowest number of voters we had was seventy-five.
It's really unusual.
Here today.
It's a long year.
Usually, usually it's quite a bit higher. I feel like that, that was a decent amount.
Yeah, one percent.
Yeah. I mean, a lot more than that. But that, that was a low during the height.
One percent.
Just, this whole movie, much lighter.
That's a good question. Could vote on.
Yes. Uh, Jim? I, I have a question. This is not, uh, tonight, we're just talking about Warner. The entire board can vote, correct?
The, uh, associate member does not vote.
Okay. But he can express his opinions, correct?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Jim. I got it. Reach it loud and clear.
I was trying to be a little more discreet. Letting us know who the associate was. Um, we're all set. I'd like to, um, continue with the meeting. Um, in front of us this evening, this article eighteen, Marijuana Use Overlay District, submitted by, I made this pronounce, Maria Prizzola, Twenty-Five Dolly Drive, Worcester, Mass. Um, Bill, if you could read the Warner. Um, I'm sorry, motion to open.
The move.
Second, and all in favor of opening the public meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I move the way.
Second.
I, I believe, Jim, we have to read it, correct?
Uh, it would be preferable for these, yes.
Withdraw my second then. All right. Do you want me to read it, read it, Mr. Chairman?
I would.
All right. Sorry for the length here. Pursuant to the town of Bellingham zoning bylaw in Mass. General law, chapter forty-eight, section five, the Bellingham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty-two, thousand twenty-two, at seven o'clock in the Arcane Room in Municipal Center, ten Mechanic Street, Bellingham, Mass. The Zoom option is also available with links noted below. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with the opportunities to comment on a proposed petition article, which is to see if the town acting by, and thus its town will vote to amend chapter forty zoning of the town bylaws by adding a new article thirty entitled Marijuana Use Overlay District. The Marijuana Use Overlay District shall be limited to those parcels of industrial land having street frontage on Williams Way and being more specifically identified below in the section two forty to forty D. And in, and if so approved, the amendment, they amended the town zoning map to identify the assessors parcels within the identified as being located in the marijuana overlay district use, use district. A, purpose, it is the purpose of the marijuana use overlay district to create a limited and defined area within the town's multi-industrial zone land area where marijuana cultivation, marijuana establishments, and, and medical marijuana treatment centers. And as those terms are identified in article, article six definitions of the Bellingham zoning bylaw by maybe located and operated. B, special permit from the planning board shall be required for use of any land area within the marijuana use overlay district for a marijuana cultivator, marijuana establishment, or marijuana treatment center. C, except as otherwise set forth in article thirty, no provision of article thirty may be construed to supersede or otherwise alter or amend the bylaws pertaining to use of land in the underlying district. Rather, article thirty is intended to supply an alternative for those who elect to submit a special permit application under the provision of the Marijuana Use Overlay District bylaw. In which case, the use provision of the Marijuana Use Overlay District bylaw shall apply. D, Overlay District, the Marijuana Use Overlay District shall consist of the following properties as identified on the assessors map maintained by the town and map attached and specifically identified as assessors map. Forty-three dash six A, forty-eight dash seven, forty-eight dash nine, forty-eight dash nine A, forty-eight dash ten, forty-eight dash eleven, forty-eight dash twelve, forty-eight dash thirteen, forty-eight dash fourteen, forty-eight dash fifteen, forty-eight dash sixteen, forty-eight dash four A dash A, forty-eight dash A, forty-eight dash A B, one line. Dimensional requirements, which is E. Excuse me for a second. Let me finish this, please. The term of provision set forth in article seven, section two forty, two forty shall apply to all use in the Marijuana Overlay District. F, standards and other rules of the regulation. All applications for a special permit here under shall include all plans and materials required under the article, um, under the article of the bylaw or act or use anything in relation thereof. Note, a map of the Marijuana Use Overlay District is attached here and incorporated hereby. And the applicant is Mayor, Mayor Maria, can you help me with the last name?
Prizzola.
Prizzola. A draft of the proposed amendment to bylaw may be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Office or Town Clerk's Office in Municipal Center ten Mechanic Street in Bellingham, Massachusetts during regular business, regular municipal service hours. For questions, please contact the town planner at five oh eight six five seven two eight nine three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Jim, for the, uh, people here this evening and those on Zoom, a lot of legalese in the war. Can you give us an overview and a summary of why, why we're here for this evening?
Absolutely. Yep, and I, uh, just for administrative purposes, so, uh, Bill did a great job reading that long, uh, hearing notice. Did we make a motion to open the hearing?
We did.
Okay, excellent. So we're all set there. Uh, so, yeah, so in summary, and I'm sure the applicants will, will dive into this deeper, but in summary, right now, uh, the town of Bellingham, uh, was actually originally a yes community, uh, back in, um, I believe twenty sixteen. And, um, uh, what that meant was the town of Bellingham then had to make local, uh, regulations. Uh, following that, the town approved cultivation only, uh, in town, uh, and, and prohibited uh, everything else at that time. Um, and tonight, essentially what this does is add those other marijuana uses, uh, which includes retail sales um, to, to be allowed within a certain area of town along, uh, what's known as Williams Way. That's kind of the, the, kind of the high level, and I'm sure the applicant will go into a much greater skill.
I understand you're a new applicant. You, you were not the same applicant as several years.
Yes.
Okay, so in essence, we're starting fresh this evening.
That'd be true, yes.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Nick Adamopolis. Uh, this is John Prizzola. Um, Maria's back there who's the actual applicant.
Okay, do you want to come up?
She's just a little shy.
Okay.
So hopefully what we're proposing here is, um, I believe that's your town council, um, is to just expand the current bylaw to allow for these other usage, um, of the marijuana in the state. The real reason we are here is to allow for adult use retail. Um, for disclosure, we have spoken to the individual who owns one sixty-eight Menon Street, which is at the corner of Menon Street and William Way, um, which gives us that fundage per the, um, long reading that was done earlier.
Okay.
Um, and that's likely was an old nightclub or pub that used to be there.
Yep.
Um, it's now vacant land as that old building has been taken down. Um, if this were to proceed and we were to get an affirmative vote at town meeting, um, the proposal would be to come back with a site plan review and go through the special permitting process to hopefully build a building there to house this project. Um, I'm not sure how much you guys know about the full process that the town mandates under this. But we would, if this did move forward, we would enter into negotiations with the select board, enter into a host community agreement, which ultimately would say that the community is allowing for this parcel to be utilized for this. Um, it would include any sort of cost that the town may incur that they want the applicant to, um, pay for. Um, at this point, the state law allows up to three percent of gross sales to be given back to the town under the host agreement for any costs that are associated, um, to this specific use by the town. After that is entered into, um, there has to be a community outreach meeting where we have to give all the butters, once again, notice, um, that's pros and cons moving forward, um, and have an answer, a question and answer period with them. Give them an overview of what the project would actually look like. Um, by that time, likely, um, we try to run that concurrent with, um, what the site plan may look like, so what the structure may look like, how we would house that. Uh, we go to the, uh, chief of police with our security consultants, propose our security plan for him, um, and ask for a letter of approval from the police chief, um, as that's part of the application, actually has to go to the CCC also. Um, once those two items are complete, we are then able to put together a provisional license application with the CCC, which is the Chem's Control Commission, which includes, um, how we would fall underneath all the regulations, showing that we understand them, our recommendations of how we would implement these inside the store. Um, and then that would get read over by all the commissioners and hopefully a provisional license would be issued. A provisional license, um, only allows us to build a facility. It does not allow for anything beyond just building to occur. That's when we have to come back before you with a full site plan review, ask for a special permit for this specific use. Um, we can't give you the security plan, but we can, um, allow you to see it, but we just can't put it in the public record, obviously. Um, I can tell you that these buildings, um, ninety-five percent of the building is usually under camera. The only areas that are, are not um, are usually entrances to bathrooms because we're not allowed to do that under state law. Um, but any area that is ever going to have products moved through it has to one hundred percent be under camera view. So. So these are ultimately under more cameras than a typical bank. There's a secured vault that has to have mesh padding within the walls to make sure that no one can just come through a wall and get into the facility, panic alarm buttons, intrusion alarms, and motion detectors for the evening stores. Once a special permit is issued, if we get through that, go through the twenty day appeal window, file at the registry, and then we can go back and build up a facility and ask the state to come in and walk through it. They come in, check all of our SOBs, that all of our employees have been properly registered with the state, that they have gone through specific trainings mandated by them. And then after that is done, it goes back to a formal vote of the commissioners of the CCC, a final license is issued, which still does not allow this to open. Then usually you ask the town to come in with their police chief, anyone else wants to see, walk through the facility, make sure they're comfortable with it. You put certain amounts of product inside the store, and then the CCC will come down again, make sure that you can show them that that product has been properly introduced into the metric system, which is their see the sale system, which, if you care, actually tracks it from the moment a cultivator puts it into the ground to the very second that it's sold. They check your POS system, make sure it has all the safeguards in there, and make sure that no one's going beyond the threshold amounts that they're allowed under state law, that no one's using an EBT card, for example, because that's not permitted. And then if that process all goes well, they will submit a report to the chairman of the CCC, who can then give you a seventy-two hour window before you can open up. That's just an overview of the process. We're here today just to ask for the district to be put in place. As council did state earlier, this this area of the town has already been allowing the cultivation within it. So at least I feel like the town has some semblance of how these companies work and how they can try not to be burdensome to the town. I can tell you that I've represented at this point about over twenty of these in different municipalities of Massachusetts. And if in your mind you think this is going to end up being what happened to Lester in North Hampton when they first opened up, that's drastically changed. You no longer have these long idle lines of times. The average individuals inside the store for hopefully less than five minutes is the turnaround time that stores want. A full traffic study would be presented to this board if this moved forward during that special permitting process. I can tell you that the vast majority of the traffic studies come back and mandate anywhere between at least fifteen, eighteen spots beyond the property, because during peak hours, which is usually that four thirty to six thirty timeframe, that's the turnover they need to see to make sure that you're not putting any additional traffic onto the road that it can't handle. But we'd also work with the town and the police chief to see if there needs to be a traffic plan put in place for the first weekend that it's open or the first month that it's open, any details that need to be put in place. If you care about the revenue benefit to the town, right now, a host agreement can include up to three percent of gross that gets paid on a quarterly basis. The town auction for a three percent fee that gets taken from the end consumer gets pretty much just like a sales tax, it's taken from the consumer and sent to the state, and the state will then refurbish that back to Bellingham. The six and a half percent sales tax is included on this, and the state gets their tax also. So at the end of the day, there's a twenty percent tax that the end user puts onto this. Bellingham's entitled a portion of the sales tax plus the three percent, and that does not include the separate three percent that is currently allowed under law through the host agreement. Some towns are doing extremely well. I'm from Webster, we have one facility in Webster. Last quarter, the three percent host agreement check that they wrote to the town was above ninety-five thousand dollars, which showed that they did, I believe, three million dollars in that one quarter. There are some other stores that are doing, you know, that's about thirty-five thousand dollars a day, I think roughly, there are stores that are doing somewhere between ten to twenty thousand dollars a day. So I'm not saying you're going to be getting a hundred thousand dollars per quarter, but that's just typical, you know, Webster's a town, I think, of similar size here with the main highway that kind of runs through, that drives in traffic. Police chiefs, when, you know, we had a preliminary talk with the police chief here several months ago, when we were talking about putting this board article together, I did give him the names of several police chiefs that we've worked with in the past, so that he could reach out to them and show that these stores have had no detrimental effect to their force or to the butters or neighbors. I'm not sure if he's reached out to them, but I did ask him to reach out to Webster's police chief, Southridge's police chief, Dudley's police chief, because we just opened one up in Dudley. Dudley, for example, opened up two weeks ago, we had a detail there for two days, they understood that the facility could handle the traffic, and then we didn't have to even have to detail it very long there. So that's my long-winded explanation. I'll answer any questions that you guys have or anyone else has.
That must have been pretty big news in Dudley.
It was. Yeah, it actually went to an old eighteen sixty mill, that was an old Ethan Allen mill.
Okay.
And it's funny, because my dad worked there for thirty years before Ethan Allen went first, so it kind of brought my entire life full circle from him working there to me building it up to, you know, make the twenty twenty-two type of business.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple. Thank you for the presentation, very, a lot of good information. I do add a couple concerns, and I think one of them was actually addressed with your presentation, and it wasn't so much specifically the marijuana use overlay district as you're presenting it. My two concerns were, number one was security, which it sounds like part of the state portion of an application, you have to do a security plan, which sounds pretty in-depth.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll dive into it after you give your second point, we can, I don't want to go into that right now.
I guess I can, I'll list off the second point, which, well, actually, if you want, you can address that, because it's actually more of a question for Jim.
Sure, so as I said before, full camera access, three sixty cameras in the vault to make sure they can do it, any product that comes in has to go under camera, when it's weighed, it has to be able to get zoomed in by the CCC who has access to the camera system at all times. We always have our security company offer to the police the ability to actually download the software on their computers also, so they can have access to those cameras. In case there was ever an emergency, they could actually just see what's going on inside without having to go in. Panic alarms, motion detecting alarms, cameras outside the facility that are going to show who's coming in and out, to make sure that there's no underage sales, anyone underage twenty-one ID gets checked at the door by a third-party security company, and then at the point of sale, that ID has to get spun again to make sure it matches up the individual. It also allows the business to track who's in the store for that data, make sure no one's going over those allowed amounts. Security individual at the front, you know, security individual at least inside the building, in case there's something that happens on the retail floor. And then similar to a bank type of setup, there's panic alarms in each POS system, there's a panic alarm at the registrations door. The plan gets given to the police chief well ahead of it being built out, so they can see it. An architectural review has to begin to the CCC before it's built out, so they can, one, make sure that all the areas of the store have been labeled properly, and then that security overlay actually gets sent to them also with the the vault being put on there and all the cameras and their locations being put on there, along with the alarm system, so they can make sure that it meets their regulations and that they feel comfortable that all the areas are covered properly. One thing, we can't make a public document, but during our special permitting process, we do let the planning boards see them, so they can ask any questions specifically to those, and we also always go and get that letter of recommendation from the police chief. And that just means that we, from my perspective, it just shows that we've worked with the police chief and our security consultant to make the police department feel comfortable that this facility can handle any sort of issue that's happening. My understanding is that there have been a few attempted break-ins of these stores. One happened maybe a month and a half ago, and I don't think individuals were passed the front door for more than thirty-five seconds before the police showed up, because the alarm system hits so fast. I'm only aware of two instances where any product was actually diverted. One was, the CCC found out, was an internal job by the security company, and they caught it through their own system. And then the second one happened, I believe, in Dorchester during the riots, what, two years ago, and they actually believed that was an inside job by one of the employees too, because some of the doors were unlocked. So there hasn't been a detrimental effect, but these have been targeted very often, because it's almost impossible to get in, no product is allowed to stay in the retail area at night. Everything has to get placed inside the vault locked, and not all employees have access to the vault, there's a very limited amount of people have access to that, the CCC has to know where those individuals are. And once again, the cameras are on twenty-four hours a day, you have to have a backup system in place for electricity in case power goes out, to make sure that those cameras are functioning for, I believe, at least forty-eight hours, and all camera footage has to be stored on the hardware for at least ninety days going back. Because the CCC does a spot check, they can actually just say, okay, we want this date, this time, this camera, we want a still image, and you have to be able to supply that.
Very, yeah, very in-depth, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so security was the one, one of my concerns. Before I start with the second one, Jim, question for you. So for this article, this, once, if this gets passed, or if it's accepted, what's involved if we wanted to add more stipulations?
Oh, you mean into the zoning bylaw itself?
Correct.
Right, so if it's not at amended at town floor, it would have to be in a modification of a zoning bylaw, which means there would just be a secondary process at at another future town meeting to change the zoning bylaw itself?
All right. Thank you. Because one thing that I noticed in our zoning bylaws, which I see that with this, the way this is written, it's going to be a special permit to the planning board, which is nice. But one item is, it looks like in our zoning bylaws, odor control isn't really well written. There's one item, I see you smiling. Okay, shit, is this a, is this a road that I should just? Okay, okay, fair enough, thank you. Yeah, there's a sentence about secondary odor mitigation, if there's any odor concerns, which, that's it. So I would, you know, similar to a security plan, which I know that that's statey, for us, an odor management plan of some sort would be great, and also, I, I know one issue that keeps coming up at many of our hearings is that, you know, there's issues that occurred in previous years with previous boards, we're not going to be here forever. So if we request a odor control plan, that's, that's good, that's on us. We get turned over, there's another planning board, they forget about it, and it's not in our zoning bylaws, that can come back and bite the planning board, and you know what.
Sure.
I think that it would be great to add literature specifically on odor mitigation in our zoning bylaws for the overlay district.
Sure, now, just so you know, the host agreements are five years in length, so we do have, it's not a permanent thing that we get to come back, so we're not good neighbors, the town doesn't have to renew the host agreement. I can tell you that in every special permit that I've ever gone to, whether it's a cultivator, manufacturer, retailer, they always put a condition in the special permit that says that if there's an odor issue, the applicant is given a period of time to address it and bring forth the cure plan, and if it's not cured, then any expense the town has to deal with that goes on to the applicant. So I don't know, I won't speak for your council, because that's his job, but I know that other towns have at least added as a condition on everything. You have cultivators, I can tell you that if there's any odor with those, it's going to be completely different than this, mainly for two reasons. One, the product that's stored in large amount is in a vault, and it's much less than what's being built at any, you know, even a ten thousand square for cultivating facility, for example. We do have to have an HVAC system in place in that room, along with charcoal filtration that goes against the odor. I'm not aware of any retailers that have had odor issues, just because there's not a lot of product there, but it's something that we can certainly address with what we're at least putting in place when we come for you in future, if we're able to do that. The other thing, I'm just jumping around my head at this point, is the odor is very mitigated, because most of the product that comes in the store is already packaged, it's very, very rich, you don't have any open flower, and unless you're doing pre-rolls inside, which the CCC does allow retailers to do, you're not going to expose any of that plant out to the air. Most retailers won't do pre-rolls, because then you have to have the product, you know, stamped with your own items and everything along those lines, because it becomes very, very burdensome. So the product comes either already stored in zip bags, in boxes, and things along those lines, which greatly reduces any sort of mitigation, where you don't have an open plant that's being exposed and seeping out to the outside.
Gotcha. I'm just wanting to know, but in this, a few years ago, we have gone into such great depth, we now know there's something called, was the right term, sniffer dogs? That could determine?
Industrial hygienists.
Sniffer dogs. They can go out and determine what the rumor was, where it was coming from, and was it emanating from, in our case, the grow plant up there. So I apologize, I did have a trusty reaction, got into breaking, then Jim could attend. You've gone into great detail about that, to control the order that it's just, I mean, literally, I did not know there were dogs, I could, I knew they could step it out, but I couldn't know they could tell where it came from. So we, we've been down that path.
I, okay, so, to your point, that's, that's good.
Yes.
But, so the issue was with the marijuana cultivation facility that had odor issues, that the odor issue was missed during the permitting process. It was after the fact.
Correct.
So that's why odor management plan would be great, and to your point with the recreational sales, you know, I, I agree with you, I don't, I'm not an expert in, you know, this field, but I, I wouldn't expect that to be an issue. However, I know the, you're calling for marijuana establishments to be allowed in the overlay district, and that includes packaging facilities in the definitions. So it's more of packaging and to capture what, you know, the existing cultivation facilities. Yeah, not laughing now, huh?
No.
Inside of that, okay, fair enough. But I think that's what I've got.
Is it the old fifty's building, is that the lot there?
It is, yes.
Okay. Can I have a couple of questions? This overlay, does that turn this into marijuana way? Is that what this becomes? An industrial marijuana?
The reason we chose it was because we knew that the town had already put some of the cultivators up there, so we, we didn't want to go to a different part of the town and try to spot zone or anything along those lines, because the town had already allowed it in that section, we thought it made sense to do there, and then when we looked at it, that lot at the end of the road was available, and we started having discussions with that individual about potentially trying to lease it and have a building erected for this use.
Okay, and how about the rest of these lots?
The, the reason that we chose, well, the reason we did this overlay district is, my understanding is cultivation can be put on this road as it already is, so we're just trying to include and make it so that this specific use, this retail use, can be housed there. Because right now, it's only for, the only thing that you put on there was cultivation, so we had to put in a new bylaw to allow for manufacturing, for example. I wouldn't be shocked if one of the cultivators up there comes back and asks for a manufacturing license.
All right, but you're only looking at that one spot down the end, you're looking at developing?
We are, we are.
Multiple sites?
Nope, it would be right there, that's the only spot that we're looking at, and we do think that based upon the location, that's not up the road where, you know, the cul-de-sac at the end, this traffic can come in and come out onto both William Way and Menon Street. It would make sense for a traffic standard way too, we're not going up to a cul-de-sac and having cars have a turnaround.
And you buy finished product, is that what you buy and sell later?
Exactly, so we're coming from state sponsored manufacturers, it's already been tested by independent labs, everything's already put in the metric, and then once we take possession of that finished product, whether it's a pre-roll, you can sell flour, but it's already packaged, edibles and things along those lines, they are all finished products, they are batched, and we just, once it gets into our possession, we put our metric stamp on it, we scan it, and now the state knows it's in our possession, that allows us to untrack it. We scan it, and now the state knows it's in our possession, that allows us to untrack it, allows the state to track it. And if there's any sort of lost product, for example, we're able to see what was lost, we can find out. When it was scanned in or not scanned into a product and go along those way, and we can give that information to the police department.
How many, how many variants, variety of products do you sell?
It really depends, I can't speak for the, the owners. I can tell you that the market's greatly shifted. Pre-COVID, it was very, very difficult for retailers to get product into their stores. There was a very, there was a shortage of actual cultivators in the state. COVID, a lot of these cultivations came online and manufacturers were able to get a lot more product, and so now there's an abundance of product out there. So, it makes it easy for retailers to see what sells and then go and either bring in more items like that, or get rid of that item and try something else. I can't take speech exactly what it is, but you're talking about edibles, pre-rolls, flour, lotions.
That was my next question, you're gonna sell edible soap?
Yes.
Okay, so there could be hundreds of items. Am I correct?
There could be, there could be hundreds of SKUs within the.
I'm just wondering, how does somebody in five minutes pick up their product and leave when you got, you know, Disneyland in front of them?
So, the vast, so the vast majority of people that go in these stores.
All right.
Either go, you're allowed to have an online presence, so they can actually see your menu online before you show up. But the vast majority of people that go into these stores know what they want ahead of time, and that's why they're in and out. It's very rare to have an uneducated consumer come in for the very first time. I can also tell you that the, the average age of a consumer in Massachusetts is fifty-three and a half years old. So, it's a demographic of people that don't wanna buy product on the streets that could be tainted with fentanyl, for example. They want something that's safe, you're selling the same product that a medicinal store would sell. So, they're going in there and they're saying, listen, I have back pain, what can you recommend I should take for that? I have trouble sleeping, do you have something that assists me with sleeping? And the, all of the, they call them bartenders, instead of bartenders, are educated what the product can do. And can give that information quickly to that consumer, so that they can get a recommendation, buy it, and get out of the store.
Do you sell medical marijuana also?
This will not, this right now will not be a medical, under state law, to sell medical marijuana, you have to be vertically integrated, meaning you gross, manufacture and sell. This, the applicant for this would just be doing retail, adult retail sales.
One more question, do you deliver?
No.
No.
And just so you know, in state law, you can't co-locate a delivery and a retail store. You could potentially use a third-party system to come buy that, they call it the courier model. But no one has shown how that can make a cure any money, because I still, like, not me, but the applicant will be selling it. And then you'd be paying the courier a delivery fee, and gas is about five dollars a gallon.
Before all that, I guess you add, where you could go online and they deliver.
There's two, there's two, so there's two different. The current model, I just said, where a retailer can say, come pick it up and vivid.
Yeah.
And now there's one where you can keep about three days worth of product at a location inside of the town. And then you can actually, instead of having it as a storefront, pack it up in a vehicle with a pre-made order, and then bring that to an individual. A few of those are now coming online, but that's not what we're proposing here whatsoever.
All right, and there won't be any, I don't know what they call them. They won't do that delivery with the.
Once again, everything that we're doing is gonna be brick and mortar inside the store, we can't, well, we can't locate a delivery on there whatsoever. And I, I hope they're not flying around.
You never know.
So, Jim, if you know, we have two cultivation facilities, right? Is that true?
We have one operating and one that is permitted and close to operating.
And, and we also, there was also a used variance for a manufacturing within those cultivators?
Correct, the one that is not operating just yet.
All right. So, thing, I mean, you obviously know this industry quite well. The amount of regulations in the hoops that someone that wants to open up any kind of marijuana establishment has to go through. Is breathtaking, it really is, it's the level of detail and. They're well capitalized, they're generally. Established business people. It is not a fly-by-night operation, if you've ever been into one of these retail facilities, it's like an Apple Store. Sometimes what they'll do is they'll hand you an iPad, none of the products is out, no one can just grab it. They, you select that, an iPad, you go up to the catcher, and then they bring it to you. The holes, I would say that it's like, the gentleman said, it's more secure than a bank. And I would say it's probably more regulated than a, a business that sells handguns. To be honest with you, in terms of what they have to do to control and inventory and manage and keep people moving and off the sidelines. It's really.
It's a lot.
And no onsite consumption. If there's onsite consumption, we likely put our license in jeopardy with the state. And this isn't a quick operation, open up, it's, you know, a long time to go through all the processes with the town and the state. It's gonna be at least probably a year from the date that host agreement's entered into, so that just goes back to the point that you said. The amount of times the CCC actually steps on there is about at least four or five before you get a license. And then they're sending investigators in all the time to do spot checks, they send secret shoppers in to see if there's any known deficiencies. So, they are a well-oiled machine to make sure that these facilities aren't violating the regulations, and they continuously update them. Now, at this point, I think every two years, they're coming back with public comments and changing things for the betterment. Retail's a little bit different than cultivators, but the cultivation regulations get changed drastically, because everyone's trying to get. More green and lower down the impact they're having on water and electricity on the towns.
So, under the definition of marijuana establishment that we're talking about, cultivation, manufacturing?
So, I don't have the file in front of me, but I believe would be adult and medical retail. You can't actually not allow medical retail under state law. Manufacturing, retail, cultivation, and technically, delivery would be in there, but that's only if you listed in your original bylaw. I don't have that in front of me, I can't remember if it was in there, most towns in their original definition did not have delivery, because it wasn't an option at the time. So, towns that are allowing or going back and changing their own bylaws. And then, I don't, I, I believe you got, the lowest you can allow is twenty percent of your. Your package stores in the town, your local licenses. So, once again, this is also constraining where you could do it, so if you ever did want to allow a second one, for example. That person would have to want to have another store literally within five hundred feet. I feel like that would just defeat the purpose, this also gives the town a lot of control of regulating where they're giving it to and where it's gonna go.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Much, I know you did not present last time, but significantly. The version, I appreciate the, commend you for that. Couple of things I've concerned with. The warrant, it's far-reaching, it goes beyond sales.
Okay, I need to draft it, but okay.
All right, I, I understand that, but our job is to deal with the warrant.
Of course.
And technically, I believe initially, when it was written, Jim, was there, I know people have heard this in town. Could you just clarify the error that might have been made on the zoning that?
Well, the applicant might be able to speak to it better, but I believe there's just a parcel that was mis, mistyped in.
Yes, this got brought to my attention outside, so, on the warrant you read, it said forty-eight dash sixteen, not forty-eight dash seventeen. However, from our perspective, we're really involved with forty-three, six A. So, the parcel that we're interested in would at least be still maintained within that warrant. There actually doesn't appear to be a forty-eight sixteen.
Okay, and that should be replaced by which?
Forty-eight seventeen.
Okay.
I could ask for, I don't know, actually, I'm not sure if I can ask for a memo before, cause I'm not a.
Okay, I just want, we'll continue forward. I just wanted, you know, there was, there's an error in the original application, and that's technically what we're supposed to vote on. But the oversight will continue with this evening.
Chairman, I do wanna just point out that forty-eight sixteen isn't actually a parcel. So, it's not, it's not as though this would be incorporated, that shouldn't be incorporated, it's just simply not a parcel.
Yeah, which even makes it simpler to move forward. I know it's a treatment center, you don't have plans for a treatment center.
Nope.
Okay, but this warrant would allow that down the road, correct?
If that's under, so your definition of what these, what a marijuana establishment is, has already been voted on and approved by the town. So, we're not trying to change.
Okay.
But the town has already approved.
Jim, what, what is, what is our town's clarification?
For a treatment center?
No, for marijuana sales.
You mean marijuana establishment?
Marijuana establishment.
Marijuana establishment, yeah, I can read that off to you right now, actually. Marijuana establishment includes a marijuana independent testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer. Or marijuana retailer as defined under MGL Section One, but not including marijuana cultivators. And we define cultivators separately.
Okay. This town went through a long process, we voted it down several times, we approved cultivating and manufacturing. And it failed, I believe, in two thousand nineteen. Why Bellingham?
Well, we actually, we just discussed this before we came in, so obviously, it's a town that doesn't have one already in it. The towns around it are starting to bring in their own.
Yes.
So, we've been able to see that the ones that have come online are allowing for revenue stream back to the town, and are successful. From my perspective, when we first discussed this, and this town has brought to my attention, you're close to a major highway. So, that is very beneficial to the applicant. It's in an area that's not heavily residential, there are some residents behind it, but it's more of an industrial area. So, we're not gonna have an area that we're detrimentally affecting a vast majority of residences with children or anything along those lines. And the other reason is, you have, you're not very far away from Connecticut and Rhode Island. And at this point, a lot of sales in Massachusetts that have shown success with the towns are coming from those towns, from those states. Connecticut is, next week, actually, allowing for their first retail licenses to be given out to applicants, so that's, that part's gonna go away. But, one, it's, it's a town that, if you look at the demographics of what is these stores, who do these stores sell to? It fits the model of Bellingham, it is a blue collar and white collar town with individuals in the age range of forty to sixty. Of an educated background, and what they're looking for is a place to go and get safe product. That's been tested by the state, and they know what they're getting, and based upon the fact that Bellingham doesn't have one of these, we thought it'd be great to come here, propose it. And I think that the state has shown that these stores are safe, that they've had no issues with them, and that the product they're selling is not detrimental. So, I understand, and I looked it up, and I did see that it had been voted down previously. We're hoping that now that the sector has matured a little bit more, and people are more aware of them, they've seen them, you know, in their travels. That those concerns they had previously will no longer be concerns.
Okay. Another question. You mentioned a lot of towns already have it.
Yes.
Right now, it may not be a great analogy, but right now, a lot of towns have trampoline centers. I think in ten years, they could be past that, okay? What's to say that we'll continue to have this marijuana facility in town still generating revenue? Are we, are we just get oversaturated?
So, if you're a city, so let's use Worcester for example, just cause it's close to me, Worcester gave out sixteen licenses.
Yeah.
They oversaturated their market completely, and there's like two or three of them that are doing well, and the vast majority of the other ones are doing very poor. Point, the company in Webster has a location in Worcester, the Worcester location does one-seventh of what Webster's do.
Okay.
Okay, but these, these stores right now, because they're not selling something that's federally legal. Are paying about a sixty percent tax rate, because they don't get to take their normal tax write-offs. If this becomes a federally, a descheduled item, and they're able to have normal taxes. These businesses are gonna make a substantial amount of money, and that's, in my perspective, why they will stay around. Because it's not going the other way, where you're like, okay, Michael, federally illegal, and now you're gonna lose all these expenses you're taking. They're gonna become more profitable for the individual, because their tax to the federal government's gonna drastically decrease. Their ability to go and take expenses is gonna become different, their ability to go get a loan.
For you don't have access to the banking system, correct?
There are, Gartner Federal Credit Union up in Gartner, Country Bank, I believe there's two small ones currently allow for deposits. I know Hometown Bank, I'm not sure if there's one around here.
One in Webster.
There's one in Webster, Oxford, they're expanding.
Okay.
They just put up their own wing to start taking these in. I can tell you that the bill before the US Senate to allow banking is definitely pushed by Bank of America. Because once California allowed this about two years ago, all the banks want access, cause they want the money coming in. But even that, just so you know, pickups are done usually daily or other day, have to be done through a state licensed transportation company. And we have to give the information to both the CCC and the town, when those deliveries are coming, when they're coming to pick up or where they're going. So that the town understands that that armored vehicle will be in the town for that purpose. So, even that's regulated, you, you can't just go and, the, the applicant themselves cannot go make a deposit of sale proceeds at their bank.
Okay.
It's illegal under state law, it has to be from a transporter, it has to be counted, they have to get a manifest, that manifest has to be given to the bank.
Okay. The demographics in town, I think, may not be the ideal demographic you may be looking for at a town meeting. I, I think there's, you know, we've already heard in some venues, that a lot of people are opposed to it. I, I voted against it last time, I came in here with open mind, open ears, open eyes. I, I was impressed with your presentation. Marijuana, people are gonna say it leads to other things. What's your response for potentially the impact on a marijuana user down the road?
So, like I said, we've been doing this for a while now, if you ask me. An individual who uses, if you want an individual to use marijuana, rather than opioids, for example. I, I know, I, I do a lot of criminal law, and I don't, I've never seen a correlation between someone that is a marijuana user. To someone that is actually using fentanyl or heroin, for example. The cause to that is usually one of two reasons. The price point, even on the street level, to get marijuana was cost prohibitive to a user of opioids. Or it was an individual that was given Percocets or something along those lines, became addicted, and then wanted to utilize heroin or fentanyl. Cause it was the closest they could get. One pill of Percocets on the street is, I think, fifty to sixty dollars, which is just substantial for someone to keep up the habit. So, you know, and turn to the much cheaper, the barrier. I think that what, as, I think at this point, there's twenty-something states allow for adult use recreational. There's thirty-something that have at least medicinal in there, it's becoming even more popular down south, where, you know, you have a very conservative majority of individuals. And there hasn't been a correlation, as, as these stores have opened up in these towns, they've seen an increase of hard drug use in cocaine or heroin or fentanyl. If anything, I think you see it the other way, people are going in there and they're utilizing it to, for medicinal purpose. Other than trying to find another skateboard or going to their doctor and popping pills. I just got a cultivation license for a former NFL player in the state, and his whole reason for getting this injury was, when I played football. All the trainers did was give us medication, here's a pill, go pop it. And he said, all the players were like, why can't we go and use marijuana? One, it's better for our CTE, for any of our post-concussion symptoms, and for our pain, and we're not gonna get addicted to it. Or, you know, try to turn to another drug, so that's my answer to it, I don't have. So that's my answer to it, I don't have hard evidence, I'm not, you know, a scientist that's done work behind it. But I can point to these other states haven't shown any sort of drastic increase. Massachusetts hasn't shown a drastic increase since it became legal. And once again, I think you see a lot of people are going in there and they're getting this for medicinal purpose rather than for the old school high. And, you know, if you want that old school, like, I just wanna go get stoned and have this feeling, you're probably gonna go buy on the street because the product you're getting here is, is not that type of product. It's, it's for the person that wants to go home after, on a Friday and probably sit down and mellow out and watch TV. I think the highest selling items are edibles for, for people that just can't sleep or have anxiety. Sixty percent of sales in the state are flour. The next closest item is edibles, which show, has low potency.
I'm sorry, I just, I just turned on, okay?
Yeah.
So the flour.
Flour is the actual, like, flour.
I thought you were calling it.
Not the plants, not like, the picked up flour.
I'm a little slow, slow here. So in essence, to make brownies or whatever.
Yeah, or they can take it home, they can, you know, roll it themselves and send by.
Okay.
Not flour, like, white powder.
No, no.
No, not flour like that, like, the, the bud of the plant.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. They, they, the industrial term is flour, so. It's the actual.
I was thinking going back to, you know. Yeah, the brownies, so to speak.
Yeah.
And with that, I'm gonna ask, just one last question. So you think we're not too late to the game?
No.
Okay.
Nope. There's more and more of these coming on, and like I said, I, I think that it's actually now more beneficial to the retailer because even the price point of them buying wholesale is reduced because there's more product out there. So two, three years ago, before COVID hit, it was manufacturers were charging, I'm related to any retailer on it because retailers like, I can't get product into my store. Even though people cultivating their own product couldn't supply their store enough. Now that there's an infusion of product, the retailer's paying such a lower upfront price that the price of the consumer is also coming down. But they're getting a healthier margin because people can now come in, actually afford the product. It was very cost prohibitive for a while there. The average basket size for individual going in there is usually somewhere between sixty five and ninety dollars. And what has been shown is that if you actually can educate the consumer with another product similar to what they're looking for, you can get about ten to fifteen percent uptake from there.
Okay, thank you.
So I noticed that, well, there's the manufacturing and cultivating piece of it. There's a couple other buildings that are not included in here that do that. Is there a reason why those were not included that are like a buddy in these properties?
Not specifically, if you want to speak to that, ultimately, we just went off William Way and thought that the easiest way of portraying it would just say that you had access, you had that access to this street.
To William.
We weren't trying to specifically exclude any other business that's already operating.
So when I counted this up and it was fourteen excluding the, the, the air, the air there. You know, I, I think you're gonna find, you're gonna have a hard time at town, at town meeting. You know, fourteen, I, I could see large amounts of people coming in for those fourteen lots. Fourteen special permit requests, I don't think about fourteen in a row, there'll be, it could be several. I know you mentioned that competition would knock that down, but you might have some larger competitors or something like that that might try to come in. So I worry about having fourteen, fourteen lots that can have this. And I think it might have been. You know, I've seen other places where they've limited to, to, you know, special permit, you know, allowing to locations in the bylaw or something like that. But I guess I'm uncomfortable with fourteen possibilities for special permits.
I might be incorrect, but I believe your bylaw, I'll defer to James, but I think the bylaw already dictates that you only are gonna, you're already capped at twenty percent of your liquor licenses. So it's not already open ended. Even though you didn't allow it, I believe your bylaws already have the cap built into that, but I'll defer to James.
No, but what I'm saying is, Jim, what would be the cap for twenty percent? Do you know how many liquor licenses we have and twenty percent of that?
Yeah, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but we did do that math some time ago. It is single digits, low single digits, I want, I wanna say three or four. But that, that's just off the top of my head, I, I would have to go back and look.
Like the cap that was running with it? So I think, I think when we looked at that, based upon the amount of liquor, it's not even liquor licenses, it's actually non liquor licenses. So it's your restaurants thing along those lines. They'll take that back, it's the other way around, it's just purely liquor licenses for package stores. That the town would only be allowed to give out one or two based upon that number. So you wouldn't have an influx of fourteen. And then if the select board has already entered into one or two host agreements, they're not allowed to go and give out three and four and then say, it's a race to finish. Oxford tried to do that, gave up four for two, and then got sued because all four of them stopped and said, we need clarification of how this is gonna go because we're not gonna put millions of dollars into a facility. And then we missed it by a week. So there's checks and balances in there, but I believe based upon the amount of licenses you have, the most this town could have would be one or two retail establishments.
So I think you might have been better off writing it, writing the bylaw that way.
I can explain that, Tommy, I, I, listen, we already know it's gonna be uphill down, right? We need two thirds votes anyways, which is always difficult in a town meeting. But, you know, we'll address that, it's good, this is good feedback for us, for us to kind of explain that there. Like, listen, there's only gonna be one or two and we can get the specific number prior to your town meeting. So we can explain that to the individuals that are there. So I appreciate that comment.
Unfortunately, we have to vote on.
Today, yeah, it's twenty percent.
Okay, big beyond the color, which I think we all.
Yep.
But it, it sort of leaves it open ended for an entire straight in Bellingham.
It, it does, so you'd be able to have up to two, most likely two locations on the William Way.
But also though, technically, you could put a treatment center in there, now there are options the way this is written.
So a treatment center as a, as a medical facility?
Well, doesn't it say in the, in the?
So a medical, right now, anybody could go to this property and put a medical facility there. Because you haven't zoned sales. And you can't preclude medical sales inside of any town.
Okay.
So treatment centers have always been allowed and they could open, technically, they could come before you for a special permit in any zone right now because it's not zoned.
Okay, so that's.
And that's what some folks did, right? They, they didn't want it and they were like, okay, well, we're gonna disallow retail sales. And if a medicinal wants to come in, then they have to go in like the red light district of the town and good luck.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like Bellingham did that, but a treatment center right now could open up in this town, even with another bylaw passing, as long as they vertically integrate.
Okay. What I'd like to do now is open it to the public, those people in the meeting, those people on Zoom. First person, Ken?
It's okay if I stay seated.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I love the way this was presented, how wonderful this is. Well, I got news for you, marijuana is a lot of things and good isn't one of them. If you read the Boston Globe last week quoting medical professionals, a hundred and seven thousand Americans died in the last twelve months of drug overdoses. Now, question is, and they tried to answer this, but they fluxed around it. Many of those people, a hundred and seven thousand, they just didn't decide, hey, let's go get a needle and shoot some heroin. Well, let's get some powder, okay, and snort some coke. No, they started on marijuana, many of them, okay? That's number one. Number two, if this were to happen, fourteen, Mr. Divine brings a great point, fourteen lots. It's open ended, it ain't gonna stop at one or two, let me tell you. Now, number two, the public will be at risk, and specifically Bellingham. He's talking about the Rhode Island border. Good luck with all that infiltration coming in from the socket. Good luck with that. And let's never forget what happened to Thomas Clardy. And for those of you who don't know who Thomas Clardy is, let me educate you. Three years ago, this state trooper who was a, a military veteran, making a routine traffic stop in Southbridge, was struck by a motorist going ninety miles an hour on the Mass Pike, sky high on marijuana. Killed him instantly. His widow in Hudson, Mass, is raising seven children like this, without a father, without a husband. So marijuana is a lot of things and good isn't one of them. Okay, number three, our public safety people, and you have the chief sitting behind it, is gonna be stretched to the limit. There's gonna be more ambulance runs, there's gonna be more accidents, you know why? And this has been witnessed by people I know, especially going by that facility in Millers. People, when they purchase, get in another car and they light up at the point of purchase, okay? Not a good thing. Number four, money from this facility will not be guaranteed to police and fire departments. Their budget is, there's no guarantees. The chief's sitting right behind me and he told me one day that of, I forget how many, but of all of the police chiefs that are his colleagues around Bellingham, cities and towns, where there's cannabis or marijuana facilities, they've been promised upgrades, increasing their staff, increased training and facility upgrades. And the chief is here and he probably will mention this, but these colleagues, he told me, didn't see one red cent for those three situations. So there's no guarantee that the money's gonna go where it's supposed to go. The revenue from this facility also isn't gonna reduce taxes. I'm in my fiftieth year as a resident here, I love this town, okay? It's the, the growth, whether it's warehouses, whatever, it's just out of control. And now we've become a truck stop with all the warehouses. Now you wanna make us a truck stop for marijuana and bring, let's bring all those people from one socket and let's bring them right in and let them, let them come down here and buy that stuff, okay? Number six, I mentioned Clardy. I never mentioned Glenn Byes, I think we know who he was. Drafted by the Celtics in nineteen eighty-six. Drafted, two days later, after he came up here and signed up, multimillion dollar contract with Reebok, went back home, second day after being drafted, and snorted cocaine and died of an overdose. His mother went around the country giving seminars and speeches on the ills of drug abuse. And I got the opportunity as a sports journalist to interview her in Boston. And I said to her, did you have any idea your son was doing cocaine? And she said, no, but I knew he was doing marijuana. So, does it, is it a gateway drug? You can argue it from now till kingdom come. The answer is very plausible and yes, in many cases, a hundred and seven thousand people dead in twelve months. They just didn't jump on a needle, they just didn't buy powder, okay? They started with marijuana, okay? Last person, his name shall be, remain unspoken. Bellingham High School, one of our star basketball players was caught smoking marijuana. He got a five game suspension, okay? The coach made that decision. Marijuana is a lot of things, but the results aren't good. Now, this board was very worried at the previous hearing about traffic, about blight, about infrastructure. Why aren't you concerned about all these major risks that the marijuana district will create? Phil said fourteen lots of them. So basically, you, you know, you could have more than three or four. I mean, it's a lot of things and good isn't one of them. And ask the widow in Hudson what she thinks of marijuana, I wish I could have her at the end of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many people in the audience share that opinion? Majority of the audience.
This chair, I just addressed some of those items real quick.
Yeah, I'd like to respond, but I'll, I'll.
You make good points, so I just thank you for your work. One, the town can actually, to be up to the town, they can specifically direct the revenue from this to certain funds. Webster, for example, we just got a full time fire department. All revenue generated from any canvas locations within the town go into a fund specifically for the firefighters. Anything left over would then go into the general fund, so there is mechanisms in place for that. Dudley, we, part of our host screen is that we actually were to send two officers within the first two years of the facility up, open, to DRE training, which is drug recognition experts so that they could be utilized as experts in court during OY drugs trials. So we, we went to the chief, he asked for that, we said that within two years we would address that. So there are mechanisms that can get put into the host screen for that. Any sales in here have to be done to individuals over the age of twenty-one. That's the whole point of the ID checks, to make sure there's nothing below that. If there's any sort of sales to anyone below the age of twenty-one, you're gonna lose your license and get pulled immediately. I mean, there's, there's no way around that whatsoever. And I, I don't, I'm not trying to, you made.
Just direct your comments.
No, I apologize, so there were great points made, those are the ones that just jumped out to me. I can't remember the entire list at this point, but there are mechanisms in place to make sure, one, no one on the age of twenty-one is getting served with all the ID verification swipe mechanisms in place. Once again, there are fourteen lots here, but my understanding of your bylaws is capped already, so it's likely not to go above two without an additional bylaw change of future town meeting to increase that. And I don't know many towns that, actually, going back to Oxford, they tried to increase it and both the proprietors are open there in the town, said, we're already bringing in revenue, we don't need to try and dilute ourselves down. Because going back to Mr. Divine's point, your point earlier, there's only a finite amount of people that you can have as consumers. Opening up four of these, you're probably gonna end up with the same net number to the town, you're just less money to the proprietors themselves.
Thank you. Just one simple, I wanna rotate the questions, it's just one, I like to rotate the questions. Anyone else have a comment?
Yes, sir. Todd Antos, one forty Menon Street, I have a few questions for the board. There is three existing properties or buildings up on William Way, correct, right now? Is that correct? That are, that are permitted for cultivation and man, well, one's cultivation and two are manufacturing and cultivation, I believe.
I think it may be two are cultivation.
Okay.
One's cultivation and manufacturing.
Manufacturing, okay. So we already have three up there. Two of them aren't being used for that at all at this point, for what reason, I don't know. The building behind me, that project started five years ago this spring illegally, which you guys all know that, what I went through. Okay, the building is still not completed. There's nothing going on here, it looks like they're starting to do some work on. What happened there was you guys permitted it or whatever, approved it, okay, for that. Nothing's being done there, I don't understand who monitors that or why. And there's been multiple applicants that have got, got in there and got approved or got permitted that went away. So all I'm getting at is how do we know that this isn't gonna happen with this retail business? And have another thing sitting there that we have to drive by every single day that is basically unfinished or an eyesore, like some other things we've already talked about tonight? What guarantees, you know, for that? And I don't understand why they're coming in here asking to get fourteen parcels of lots approved for under a special permit. Why are they asking for that? What is their interest in that? They're trying to open up a retail store and a store. But they're coming in here looking for a special permit that's gonna allow both sides of William Way going up both sides? I don't understand that, what is behind that? What is the reasoning for that? So, you know, there's a lot of things going on here. The building in the front of the fifty thousand square foot building that you guys approved to, for, I believe that one was for both, I thought. Not being used to that either, so why are we gonna start approving more parcels of more buildings? Not being used to that either. So why are we gonna start approving more parcels of more buildings on William's Way? When we already have two sitting there that have been approved by the board and permitted. That are going nowhere.
Okay.
I did, so I do have a lot of questions. I want answers tonight. I never get answers. I get stares, I get look downs, I get. I want answers, you know, I'm not here to, 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 you know, stop anyone from doing anything. I just don't understand the process. I don't understand why things aren't being patrolled or completed in this town. Things are being left alone. And that's, you know, some, just looking for some answers. And again. You know, if they get permitted to go in there to retail. What guarantees us, you know, people in town that that is actually gonna go through? They could, they could, you know, there could be something, you know, uh. You know, who knows, something with the state, it could be something with financing. There's no guarantees. They wanna sit here and tell you the percentage that you're gonna get. The town's gonna get. But there's no guarantees. And just like the two buildings that you've already approved on William's Way. That aren't being used for the approvals that you guys gave. So I mean, I have a lot of.
Let me, let me get a chance to answer your question. First of all, I, I think a majority of the board has raised the issue. About the size of this, um. What is it, M U C P zone? I, I'm concerned about the, the. I guess the gravity of, of. The application.
On which buildings?
On, on what they wanna propose. The fourteen, fourteen pieces of property. I believe, I believe it's far reaching, but that's my opinion, is one person. Jim, can you address? Uh, the concerns about the two buildings that we permitted that are currently, um, operating?
Absolutely. The, those two buildings are under construction. It has taken, uh, to the. Gentleman's point, it has taken exceptionally long time. Obviously, we'd love construction to move smoothly. As it's not something that the town, you know, can control. This is. Uh, the planning board did grant those and, um, and construction has begun and. To my understanding that it, the, the site has been, uh, maintained with some. Uh, some issues that the building inspector certainly has had to address over the years.
And correct everyone, Jim. Was that property sold?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, well, one of them, the, the one that's, uh, still under construction has been sold and changed hands, yes.
Okay. So I, I think the selling might have slowed it down.
Yeah.
To be, to be frank.
Thousand square foot building that sold.
Okay.
So, but, you know, but still, I just don't understand why it's, it's never been completed. It's not being used for what it was permitted for. And now they're coming in here looking to get fourteen.
Well, and I think it's a, it's a different.
I understand.
I, I don't.
I'm just saying, as far as the town.
Correct.
And start approving more lots where you've already approved lots that not even be, the one in the front's not even, as far as I'm concerned, isn't even gonna be, isn't even permitted. But he's running his business out of it, which has nothing to do with why it was permitted. The building in the front. You know, the existing building that cultivates, I understand, talking to Jim. That when they came into town, the, the town didn't have any, any laws in place to, to do anything about it. So they basically came into town, I understand that's what happened.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fine, I'm fine with that. But again, like I said, I mean, you've allowed, you know, permitted two more buildings that have been stagnant for years now and not being used. So that's my point.
Okay. We hear that.
I think, I think, I think the applicant, if that's what you call him, he should be here concentrating on that one lot. With fifty's is to put in a retail marijuana store, not to come in and get all those lots, fourteen lots approved. Because I don't understand what, what is, what's the connection, you know what I'm trying to say?
I asked the same, I asked.
Something not right there, you know?
I asked the same question.
So that's, you know.
Thank you.
And again, I don't wanna have a, a, you know, another unfinished project in the town that's fenced up. That's ripped down, that I'm gonna have to look at. You know, I have customers that come to, into town to my business. You know, and, and, and this, you know, you know, I want it to look nice.
Mm-hmm.
That's the bottom line. They're coming in off of one forty, it doesn't look so great. They come in off of, uh, you know, one twenty-six or higher, it doesn't look so great. It's been a total eyesore on one forty coming in for years.
Mm-hmm.
Which the pro- that project is, you know, obviously coming to a close, it looks like, you know? But that's been, you know, something that I drive by every single day of my life, you know? I, I do the right thing in this town, I treat people right, I, I mind my own business, I pay my taxes, I do everything I'm supposed to do. You know, so I'm just looking for a little cooperation, maybe, you know, um. You know, basically, that's it, I guess, you know?
Uh, how many people, um. I'll let you, one second.
Sure.
Uh, agree with his comments? And online, now if you wanna address this concern.
So just to be.
Cause the board has the same concerns.
Truly just fair. We have only spoken to the owner of this one parcel of land. The only parcel of land we care about is this one parcel. We didn't wanna spot zone one parcel.
I understand.
Full transparency. So we did this because it just abutted William's Way. We have not talked to anyone else here. I personally would not want. A store in any of these other parcels because it's going to cause havoc, cause it doesn't have an egress and egress in two different ways. Host agreements that the select board enters into with the help of their council can have provisions in there. That say that after a period of eighteen to twenty-four months. If the store is not open, you have to come back before us and show us, explain to us exactly why it's not. And that if they're not satisfied, they can stop that host agreement from being put in place. Hold them all, one hundred percent. So that can be a mechanism that, that, I'm not talking about. The individuals comment with the other buildings, cause I don't know what those host agreements look like. But those host agreements can certainly include a provision that would address that comment. Additionally, this is a retail store, it's much easier and quicker to build out than a cultivation because, one. It doesn't have to be so intricate inside and two, the price point for the cost of building is compared to a cultivation is very, very different.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So on this, on this map, the Davos lots. If you only, if they're only looking for a certain lot, why are these all here? What, what is this? I mean, it looks like we're just gonna add one whole, like you say, marijuana way.
Change the name?
I'm, I'm Davos and I live at one fifty-two Menon Street.
Okay.
I have that eyesore that Todd has to look back, uh, right behind us every single day. And it's ruined our properties, you know, all the water and all the, all the floods that we've gone through and. You know, and, and there's supposed to be certain things and.
And they never done?
It hasn't been done. It's got promised and, and so hopefully it's gonna, some of it's gonna get resolved by August.
You could address some of those concerns.
But, but I really wanna know about this.
Um, we, we, we have the same way.
Yeah, but I mean, I really don't.
If he's only interested in that one segment, why is all the rest?
I, I, I understand.
And, and, and then, and then all this on here about the, uh, supposed to be, uh, because of the marijuana cultivation, the marijuana establishment. And the marijuana medical marijuana treatment center. You know, I, I'm very confused about this, this whole, uh, meeting tonight.
A, a, as, as am I. Let me, let me. From a, I'm, I'm far from a valid major or immense major, immense person. Let me tell you what I think's happening here. Under the marijuana use overlay district. Jim, are these terminologies that would fit within an overlay district? With regard to marijuana uses, industrial zone, um, and what the purposes are. As part of section A.
You're referencing the definitions and the, the types of uses for marijuana?
Yes.
Right, so, um, you know, ultimately, this is written and designed by the applicant. They are including definitions from, uh, yes, from the Cannabis Control Com- uh, Commission and their. Their statute and guidelines. Um, so this kinda rounds out all the different types of uses that are. Um, expressed in the, in the law, and so they are defining it here as potentially allowed within the overlay district. So they are allowing for additional uses and that map indicates the lots in which the, they could. Not they, but anyone who owns that property could put that type of use.
Chief.
I think when we originally did this by law years ago, we took the same road. We figured, let's start off, we'll do grows. See how it develops. We brought it forward, adopted it, people moved on. Came back to town meeting, it was tried to be changed to retail distribution and got shut down. I think this industry is really confusing. I mean, you make it sound simple.
It's not simple.
Between the hemp products, the synthetics, the edibles, the oils, I mean, you gotta be a chemist to figure this stuff out. I've been working in conjunction with our Board of Health, especially Vinnie and our tobacco compliance officer. We have five stores in town that sell products. Believe it or not, we're having issues. One of them was just given a significant fine. There's too much still in this industry that's not understandable yet. Um, I'm still not sold on the fact that I hate when politicians come to me and say. Chief, everybody's doing it, we should be doing it.
Yeah, right.
It's a lousy rationale, I don't like it. And I haven't heard a good thing yet, except money for the town. It's money for the town, host agreements, money for the town. Tell me something else good. Are you gonna generate tons of jobs? Are we gonna have programs for, you know, education? Are we gonna? Um, I can't sit here and say this is great, cause we're gonna generate job, money for the town. I'm teaching their kid gear about the dangers of drugs. I'm trying to get offices certified in drug recognition experts, which we're even having trouble with the courts, accepting our testimony after they've developed the programs. There's a lot of issues that still haven't been ironed out with this whole industry. It sounds simple. Everybody says it's not such a big deal as it used to be years ago. I agree. Scary part is, we're going through a phase now with the pandemic, everybody wants gun permits. They wanna stay home, they don't wanna work, you wanna see that by what's happening with the jobs, and they wanna smoke. It leads to other problems that nobody wants to discuss.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this town has played it right. I still think we should be in a holding pattern before we jump into this. Because there's still too many unknowns that we're not, if they say tomorrow it's federally legal, we've got no choice. Okay, bring it on. But for now, the issue of working with Vinnie, the Board of Health, a tobacco agent. It's, it's confusing. It's confusing having people going to stores trying to make buys. It's confusing trying to check products for T H C levels. It's, there's a lot involved in this industry that's not that simple, that I hate to dive into headfirst.
Okay.
Um, it could end up being a full-time compliance thing, if we're gonna bring in a whole neighborhood of stores or whatever we're doing. Alcohol and tobacco, we have programs for that. This would be another thing that we would have to establish programs for. Right now, we have four or five stores that are selling pipes for tobacco use only, all I've got is a couple out there. Um, that in itself is creating work. Nobody talks about the impacts. Nobody talks about anything, and I'm really sick of hearing that. It's not gonna solve all our problems financially. That's all, everybody looks at it as a golden parachute. Well, guess what? There's issues. And right now, I like the way it's going. You grow it. You get it out of town and you sell it. You can go to South Dominion, Blackstone's got their stores completely facing our pot lot. And basically, we deal with any traffic issues, any people loitering, any of that stuff there, so. It's not the end of the world, but at the same time, I don't think we're ready to dive into this yet. Especially when a group like you guys, who are experts on zoning and planning, have questions about the way it's presented. There's too many broad avenues here, I think, that we're not sure of. The same thing with the products. And there's too many things that we just don't know the whole story behind. You've got the knowledge of everything that's, you know, I wish you could work with me. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Work with the Cannabis Control Commission on, um, the security claims. I'll be wrong, it's top notch. But. On it, it's tough for us to keep an eye on these places and to understand what the products are, what they can sell, can't sell. Um, watching to make sure there's no miners involved, there's alcohol, the alcohol. It creates work. And nobody really wants to talk about the impacts. You know what I mean? It's all about money. I get it, it's, it's the industry, you know what I mean? But it's not gonna solve our problems by throwing money at the town. And it's not gonna improve any qualities alike or anything else. So there's still a lot of uncharted territory that still needs to be looked into. And to, and to end it on a weird note, Jim, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yes, chief.
I've been at this a long time. Maybe my memory's gone. Wasn't William's Way, uh, designated strip club area that we had to kind of? Take a possible land and put it up there? So now we're gonna have a mixed use overlay district that's gonna be industrial slash strip zone slash marijuana. Why don't we just put something there about firearms or something at the same time? Make it a hell of an area. You know, maybe I'm wrong, but.
To, to be frank. Years ago, someone asked me what I thought.
Right, right.
About the adult entertainment. By law, every town had to have it.
Right.
I proposed to put some.
And that's where we ended up. So I don't, I just think I mentioned in the conversation, that's something about that area too.
Um, any other questions? Anything new you need to add?
Yes.
Okay, please, mate, it's a long night, very, we, we, we have more things ahead of us.
Okay, uh, I have this, I'm good authority from a high official in the school department here. Uh, recently, uh, within the last year or so, a survey was done with, with the four grades. Rates nine through twelve, thirty percent of the kids that responded, all of them that responded to the survey. Said they've used marijuana at Bellingham High School, thirty, and it's probably higher.
They're probably.
Phil and, uh, and Brian, I think you have young children, uh, at Bellingham High School, are ready to go there. I, I, I'd be scared out of my wits to be sending my kid up there knowing that three out of ten kids are, are using it.
Been there two years already. He's been there two years already.
It's not good. It's a lot of things, but good ain't one of them.
I, I understand. Anyone else?
Yeah, it's been forty, Bellingham Board of Health. Um, my problem with this is just like everyone else's problem. It's too inclusive, it's too many parcels. If they just came in for one parcel, which is the fifty's lounge, whatever. And I still think it will get shut down. Because we basically didn't want other than cultivation, which is agriculture, my botany, whatever you wanna call it. It's not another thing like a package store and something else. We have one Franklin, we have one Blackstone. We don't need one Bellingham to make it central, so, wow, you know, you know, so you don't have to drive more than two and a half miles.
Aren't they putting one in where Gasko is?
Yes, yes, they are. It's already.
Go right on one forty, not even a mile away.
Whatever, so it's, whatever, anyway, but the bottom line is, you know, I'd like to see it go as a single proposal, you know? So the overlay, to me, is too inclusive. It, it shouldn't be recommended for town meeting. And we'll deal with the overlay instead of one single parcel as a retail thing. To add one other thing, in October two thousand thirteen, working with Police Department Detective Division. We had two adult only stores, tobacco, but there were also other things, synthetics, marijuana. Other incense, other mind altering substances. So the Bellingham Board of Health, and I said, we'd be glad to go to Superior Climates. Institute a thing to shall not sell anything that's mind altering in a town of Bellingham. As of October two thousand thirteen, so the only thing that could be contested and caused the. Nationality Area Board's Health Attorney shows up, which also sits on the commission. Um, said, you'll have a problem if they bring up alcohol. I said, well, it's pretty easy. It was legal in nineteen twenty. We've had the problem for ninety-nine years. We've only had the marijuana problem for two years. It will stand up in court. I would say that public health judges, public health, you know, people weighing in and that. Water Health always gets, let's say, the extra mile, because we're here to protect public health. We don't care about anything else. Not the money, not the other stuff, you know? We're not into that. You know, we regulate our businesses. If you violate the law, like it just happened, that person got. Cost the state when initially alerted, I say, this state. And that. That entity gets an eight thousand two hundred dollar fine, they do it again, you know, I was, so. We hold it round on other things and, you know, I think, well, it won't make it through Tommy, but I'd rather not see.
We're, we're here.
Some comprehensive thing happen.
Okay, we're here to determine that. What we have, what our decision tonight is for. Jim, is anyone else in there with the town with a hand raised?
No, not, no one further online.
Okay, um.
I'd like, I'll move to close the panel here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? We'd like to entertain a motion. And then we have discussion involved for the vote.
Yeah, so I, probably gonna be unpopular, but I'll, I'll move to, uh, to recommend the Warren article to the meeting.
Will we go second? All right, can somebody move to?
All right, can somebody move to not recommend?
Yeah, I'll move to not recommend.
All right.
Will you go second?
I'll second.
So then, I'll start.
Excuse me, technically, hold on. I believe you have to remove your motion.
Well, it was never second.
Okay, so it dies?
Died on the line.
Okay, fine, okay. So your motion before to deny the warrant art.
To not recommend.
Not recommend, excuse me. That's critical. Thank you.
So, um, you know, I don't, I, I, I completely understand the concerns that people raise. I do think that there are issues with marijuana use, particularly with driving and, and being able to test. And there's, there's, and it's, it is a substance like alcohol that impairs people. So I think that is a completely legitimate uh, position, and I understand that completely. From a zoning point of view, um, I'm not concerned at all that they've identified fourteen parcels. We identify large swaths of land, uh, in town and, and within these large swaths of lands, each parcel could, uh, if it's properly zoned in a B one or B two, whatever it is, could all individually be, uh, liquor stores. Not all of those parcels become liquor stores, and they are subject to licensing and permitting and limits to the number. So just because there's fourteen parcels in the potential area, we've heard that only one or two uh, of these kinds of businesses could go in the town entirely. So I think the fourteen parcels is, is confusing. I, I completely agree, but I, I do think that's a bit of a red herring, that in that only one or two of these kinds of businesses, um, could go in, in this particular zone if it was allowed. So that's, that's that part. I think, and, and I, I, like I said, the, with all the CBD oil, the.
Brian, there's a motion in the floor. I think we, are you?
I have a discussion.
Okay.
So with regard to the CBD oil and all of the other stores that I do, they are, uh, troublesome, uh, and, and, and they are not strictly regulated. The good news is with these kinds of particular establishments, they are overly regulated. There's only one or two of them theoretically in the town. So, uh, from that point of view, and from the point of view of the, the management and the regulations and the visibility that, that these industries have to have, I don't think this is a, this is a bad idea. I think the, Bellingham, if you look at, uh, the communities that surround Bellingham, most have retail facilities. Um, the sky has not fallen yet. It, the impacts that people worry about legitimately so are the same impacts that people worried about with prohibition. I think this is a generational shift. I think there's a different mindset. I think that laws have changed and people's outlooks and, and how they look at these marijuana and alcohol has changed. It's legalized, that will never go away. That will never go away. It's gonna become legalized federally. So I, 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 I don't want the town to lose out on a, a business that will bring jobs and that will bring revenue, um, that has relatively minor impacts for reasons that don't necessarily, I think, make sense, if you kind of look back from a higher level. That's all I want.
Okay. I'd like to, uh, call for the vote. You agree with the motion to not recommend?
Right. So I would say no, right?
Yeah. I, I don't know how you vote.
Yeah, but you can, to not recommend, so I would say.
You do not want to recommend?
No, he's in favor of recommendation. Yeah, so I said no.
I, I'm in favor of not recommend.
And I'm saying yes to moving forward with not recommending.
So it's three one?
Gentlemen, I, standing presentation.
If marijuana is alright.
Seven kids.
Okay, so we've got one more.
One more.
I'm here for you, sir.
I, I have one question. Why is it gotta be on Williams Way? It's just like buying a package of cigarettes.
We have to, it's, we can't discuss, we can't discuss anymore, it's over. We can't, it's all done.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it's closed, and it's not fair to the applicant. So we can't discuss it any further, sorry. Bye-bye. Or you can stay for the next one. Yeah. So yeah, take care, bye.
I'm not used to these.
Oh, we have to, yes.
Neither am I. Yeah, I'm, neither am I. See what he did there? He was baiting me.
I'll be right back, Chris. Two minutes.
Now, we have a special permit tonight. Couldn't have been in today.
What?
Huh?
We're not leaving here. We have a special permit.
Shucks.
Go ahead, just to let you know.
Oh. That's where Phil is. That joke.
Keep with the record, I personally blanked Rob. Blank from this meeting. Understood. Thanks, Brian. I really feel like part of the team right now. I'm still reeling from the, good job, Rob. Brian's sitting right next to me. All, all right, you know what? I'm sorry that I'm the IT professional of this board. Could use that. If the IT, Bellingham IT first.
All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is Article twenty-one, Acceptance of Rogers Street as a Public Way. I will read the public hearing notice. Have maybe the shortest public hearing notice, okay?
Motion open?
Uh, motion open?
So move.
Second, all in favor, please, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'll move to waive the public notice because there's no one here and no one on the table.
Jim, are we allowed to do that?
For the street acceptance, I think that should be fine.
Okay. Motion to waive the public notice, all in favor, please, uh, seconded?
Second.
All in favor, please, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Jim, if we're in favor of tonight, we have an action to approve, um, Public Way. It has been approved, if I'm not mistaken, by the EPW Director. Correct?
Right, yes. The DPW Director, Don DiMartino, does recommend, uh, the recommendation of, uh, accepting Rogers Street. Uh, they are surveying it. Amy, I believe we got the plan for Rogers Street?
Yep.
We did.
Yep, excellent. And as you guys know, historically, uh, the town has slowly worked towards accepting uh, as many streets as possible as we do, um, you know, plow. Uh, and the DPW Director has raised concerns of, you know, liability and insurance, and we, so his, his project over the years has been to uh, survey and, and plan out to accept as many of our town streets as possible.
Is there any reason why this should not be accepted?
Well, so the, I, the same reason I give each, each and every time for these, uh, you know, typically, uh, if this was a new street, you know, this board, I think, would hold, um, the applicant to a standard to build it to a public way. Uh, all, uh, we, this street does not meet those standards. Uh, so the, you know, the, and the, uh, a, a reason would be that, uh, you know, the town is now taking on the liability and, and which in turn means future maintenance. Uh, however, I will say, you know, historically, we have, uh, accepted these types of, of roads over the years.
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Jim, this is not a, this is, there's two pieces of this with an area that's not included in this, but still, is that still a paper street at this point?
Well, so that, that's, that's, uh, wetlands. Uh, so it, it was laid out to go, uh, kind of like a horseshoe. Um, but it's a, a stream cuts across it. So, uh, unless they build a bridge, which I don't ever see happening, uh, it will stay very likely kind of two, two ends.
Thank you.
So it's been approved by the DPW Director. We realize it will, he did that, realize it will cost potentially revenue to the town, and he still is in favor. Correct?
Cor- correct. It will go on our list of roads to, to maintain in the future, uh, with that understanding. But also it does give the town some protection in terms of insurance and liability.
Okay. Has anyone, uh, approached you opposing approving this?
I haven't, uh, received any comments. Amy, I don't know if you have.
No, I have not.
Anyone in the public want to comment? I think everyone could be, could have left.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I, I'm to entertain a motion.
Making practice.
To close?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Can a motion?
Uh, move to, um, approve the street acceptance.
Five seconds. The second is all in favor of approving Rogers Way. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion passes. Intertain a motion to close this public meeting.
So move.
Second. All in favor of closing the public meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.